The government.
We do have to approve the governance and leadership, so I'll make that motion separately.
Okay, what you did. Okay, do I have a second?
Second.
Second, any discussion on that at all? If not, I'll take a call, Commissioner Godu.
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Now. Now we'll take the.
And now with respect to payroll, I move to approve the remainder of the consent agenda, which includes a payroll expense in the amount of one million, two hundred and eighty-nine thousand, one hundred and sixty-one dollars and sixty-two cents for the period ending on January twenty-eighth, twenty twenty-three.
Motion been made, seconded and seconded. Any discussion on that? Not on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Just, just want to let you, everyone know that James and Henry have certain tenures, corrections is here. And Commissioner Coyle.
I'm so.
Final motion.
I just didn't meet them.
Oh, okay, so.
We're on to, we just voted yes.
Okay, so now we're on to, we're on to liaison reports. So I'll, let's, we'll go to Commissioner Godu.
I have nothing to report.
We're gonna go to Commissioner Coyle.
Um, over at the House of Corrections, the population has gone up to about a hundred and fifty. Um, there fortunately, uh, no COVID among the, um, inmate population. Um, there is some mat. Uh, we're putting on figures to fund that, the mat programs and brand programming to fund the mat program. Um, over at long-term care, transmission for COVID is still high. Um, the survey team from the state came to the assisted living facility on January thirtieth, and that went really well. Um, it was good timing that we had the mock survey because it was great people or last week because it gave an opportunity to do review and, um, we are happy to report that, uh, the survey went really well. Um, so that's really good news. Uh, the last thing is Dr. Kelly, who is our partner, um, at Core Positions, has resigned, and so there's going to be some transition, uh, with the position. Um, Chuck was in, over at, in the finance department. Um, Chuck was extraordinary in his whole team. The finance department was very, very busy this week because obviously it's the start of the new month and the end of January means all of reporting requirements, which means long, very late, uh, hours, particularly for Chuck, who was there till two-thirty in the morning one day, trying to get all of the submissions for, to the treasury, um, complicated by some of, uh, like with us, particularly with, uh, rental assistance, some of the issues with uncored, so it was incredibly difficult. The good news, the good news to come out of this, I, and so the very good news to come out of this is that we are up to twenty-five million of the sixty million that can, um, that will be considered categorized as lost revenue, which is so significant because it really opens up some, uh, more flexibility in how we're using the, that opera money for, um, how we use that opera money. It's not so confined. So, um, I will end on that hot note.
All right, thank you. So I, uh, my liaisons, both Allison, um, and Jude have given me lengthy reports, uh, and I did talk to sheriffs, but I'm gonna let them, or we go through the round robin. I'll just let them say it, um, what they reported, um, so. The, what was I gonna say now? I'm gonna mention one other thing, but I forgot. But anyway, we'll, we'll just move on. We'll just go on to, um, Human Resources request to amend the one twenty-six twenty-three motion. With LTC repurposed title change effective date.
I move to amend the January twenty-sixth, twenty twenty-three motion for the long-term care repurposes title change to reflect an effective date of January twenty-ninth, twenty twenty-three.
Second, motion's been made, seconded. Is there any discussion? If not, on motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I will vote yes. Recruitment initiative expansion.
I move to approve instituting a Rockham County LinkedIn landing page for the purposes of recruitment and retention overseen by the intruder as recommended by the senior human resources director.
Go ahead, your second.
I'd like some discussion before we move this.
Why don't we second first, so we can have the discussion, um, otherwise I can't.
Okay, second.
So second, and then we have discussion. Um, Commissioner Godu.
I am, um, we've received lengthy report from, uh, our recruiter with lots of interesting information, uh, a, a number of, uh, initiatives that, um, we're looking to change and, and add money to, and, um, only got it yesterday. And I, I have so many questions about this, and I'm looking for full discussion on it. I don't want to pass any motions today regarding that. Uh, I, I, I'm not interested in spending any money, um, any new money, uh, for any purpose until we've had a full discussion about how we're doing this, what we should be doing, and, uh, the direction that, uh, this whole effort is taking. Uh, so, I, I want to talk about it, but I.
You'd move to table the motions till next?
I, I would like to move to table all of the motions until next week.
Okay, so. So we had, first off, we had a motion to discuss, for discussion, so let's see if there's any more discussion first before we make any other motions, if that's okay. Do you have?
I don't, I don't think that he, I don't think that Commissioner Godu was making a formal motion at this point. I thought he was just laying out what he, how he wanted the trajectory of it, but certainly we could continue with this.
So we're in discussion. Do you have anything, Commissioner Coyle, you'd like to add?
Um, I'm perfectly comfortable with engaging in conversation. I did have some questions, not with, with less, less with regard to the first motion, and then to with regard to some of the other initiatives, so. Um, certainly, this is the opportunity if we want to talk about it.
Right, exactly. I'm gonna, uh, afford the opportunity, um, for Autumn and Allison, if they'd like to chime in right now, and just let us know what your thoughts are on this.
All right, absolutely. Thank you. Um, so with the LinkedIn landing page, we have lots of people that work here at Rockingham County that have connections from their prior employers, connections from their current employer here at Rockingham. Um, so we have many people here that, you know, have one hundred plus connections on LinkedIn.
Excuse me, I can't hear you.
Oh, my apologies. I'll, I'll put my mask down. Um, so we, we have, um, plenty of employees here that have, you know, one hundred plus connections on LinkedIn, um, and basically a LinkedIn landing page slash, you know, um, uh, employment page for Rockingham County will allow everybody that works here at Rockingham to say that they work at Rockingham on their LinkedIn page. So because we currently do not have one, um, anybody that wants to say they work at Rockingham County, it's kind of like a free type on, you know, your employer on that page, so it doesn't lead you to anywhere. If somebody goes on your page and wants to click on, you know, your employer that you work at, they're unable to do so because it was a free type that they had put in. So creating a LinkedIn landing page would allow people that work here to connect in to the LinkedIn landing page so that their connections that they are reaching out to through their posts and their shares, uh, would be able to go to their page, click on their employer, and then see everything that's happening at Rockingham County. So this will be all encompassing of everybody that have worked here. When you go and search Rockingham County on LinkedIn, you'll be able to see everybody that is connected with that page. Um, and, you know, along with that, we'll also be able to update not only the public, but also job seekers on what's currently happening at Rockingham County through various posted shares. Uh, we'd be able to share other pages that we have on LinkedIn, like the rehabilitation and nursing center does. Um, and we'd also be able to post jobs, um, from time to time as well on there. So it's kind of like an all-encompassing, uh, you know, different way to just get connected with us.
So my question would be, uh, so my question would be, uh, for employees, this would be an opt-in situation?
Correct. So they don't have to say they work at Rockingham County. They also don't even have to have a LinkedIn page, but the option would be there, um, if they wanted to say that they work.
And there's a cost involved?
So there's no cost involved to do the LinkedIn, um, and, you know, landing page. It's free to set up the page, um, so we would have no cost.
Okay. Further questions, Commissioner Godu?
No, that answers my questions on, on that particular, uh, issue, and we don't have any, and I believe that motion is on the floor.
Yeah.
We're in discussion on that.
There was a discussion, there's kind of first and a second, yeah, so we can further discuss.
In support thereof, I mean, I think what we've seen from, um, just from our internal hiring process, that a lot of times, um, I know with correct, one place is corrections, that, um, people who are working within Rockingham County are great, um, at networking to recruit other people to come on board. And to me, the LinkedIn, this landing page would just facilitate and, you know, carry on that initiative. That's something that's already happening at sort of a grassroots level.
I, I have another question.
Just move the question.
Well, I have, I have just, if we indulge in one minute, so who's gonna be the administrator of the page?
Um.
Landing page?
Yep, so I would go ahead and create the landing page, um, and then from there would be able to set it up in a very similar way to, um, you know, what's already out there, so like our websites and things along that feature.
And then, um, so again, who would be the administrator? Because I would want, I would want requesting at least two people to be on it? I don't want it to be a single person on it?
So I would oversee, I manage the recruiter, so I would oversee it. And if there's any technical issues and stuff like that, we'd always defer to Rob and IT.
Okay, all right, that's, that's fine. Any further questions?
No.
Further question?
No.
Okay, so on the motion, uh, because we have a motion on the floor, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Motion two?
I would, I would like, I, I move to table motion two until, uh, we've had time to fully discuss it, and I would entertain a.
Well, motion, motion to table is non-debatable, so I need a second, and I do have a second, so it's non-debatable, so on the motion to table, motion two, uh, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
And I will vote yes.
Um, I would like to have a full discussion on.
Yeah, we'll, we'll agendaize that another time. And then it will give everybody an opportunity to.
Well, we need to talk about it before a motion. So I, I honestly, I kind of object to having, uh, new stuff brought to us the day before on an agenda, uh, when it is obviously a full discussion to be had on everything that's going on, uh, and no opportunity to talk about it, so. First, I'm looking to have an, uh, uh, opportunity to talk about it, and then, um, think about it, and then we'll vote on it.
That's fine, but we had a motion to table. This is, it's non-debatable. That means we're not discussing it now. We'll put it back on the agenda for next week, and then we can have a discussion at that point.
I think it would just be behoove us to just have a conversation about it.
The only way we're gonna be able to do that is if you take back your second on the table and takes back his motion.
That's sure.
I'll bring it up under new business.
No.
Why not?
No, you're gonna do it.
I'm not gonna bring up the motion.
We're not gonna talk about it. You guys tabled it. It's a non-debatable.
We tabled the motion.
You tabled the discussion for motion two?
No, we didn't just table any discussions. We tabled the motion, for motion two.
Take that, so take back your motions, and we can talk about it.
We voted on it.
We haven't, we haven't voted for table. All we.
Yes, we did.
No, we didn't vote yet.
No, it was.
All right, so motion, motion to table, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Motion to table?
Do, I mean, your position, I'm just first and people.
We're in the, we're in the voting mode right there, so you gotta vote. No discussion. He's got a yes.
I'm, I'm asking a question before we vote to the vote.
We had discussion. We're, this is a non-debatable motion. He moved the table. Now it's your turn to vote.
Yes.
And I will vote no. So it's two zero, it's tabled, so we're not discussing it. We're moving on to sign, the sign-on bonus.
Mr. Chairman, I believe that we could still have a discussion about it.
No, you can't. We moved, we moved the table there. Sign-on bonus. We'll put it on next week, and we can discuss it further, so.
Or we could discuss it. I can, Commissioner Godu, why did you raise this in the meeting this night?
Go ahead, sign-on bonus.
I move to, uh, I move to increase the nursing sign-on bonus payment to eight thousand dollars for LNA's and ten thousand dollars for LPNs and RNs, as recommended by the senior director of Human Resources and senior director of long-term care service.
Second, and second, discussion on this motion. Commissioner Godu?
It's my observation that these sign-on bonuses are not recruiting new, uh, new, uh, recruits. Um, I'm just looking at the report that I've seen so far, uh, it's barely successful in, in these departments. And I think that we need a new approach. I don't know that this is the approach that's gonna attract, um, more nurses. If I thought it was, then I'd say, yeah, let's go with it, but I, I, I'm just, I'm just not convinced that adding more money to the sign-on bonus, when they're not taking care of, no one's taking advantage of five thousand dollars. I think that three thousand dollars more is gonna all of a sudden move somebody. I, I, I just, I question about that. I, I, I don't know its effectiveness as a tool.
Commissioner Coyle?
I think it's worth giving it a try, and I think what we saw, there is a tipping point, right? I mean, I think we saw this with corrections, um, with the rate of pay, like you get to a tipping point, and it's like, doesn't work, doesn't work, doesn't work, and then there is a tipping point where it is successful. I do agree that at five thousand dollars, it hasn't been successful. So, to me, I'm of the mind, let's, let's give it a try. And we can always go back to the tape, come back to the table and amend it, but if we don't try, we won't know. So that's kind of.
Um, so my question is this, the bonus money is really opera money, correct?
That is correct.
It's not coming from the budget, it's opera money.
That is correct.
Second, um, we did have a sign-on bonus, um, that was what number, five thousand?
Correct.
And to, to Commissioner Godu's point, you know, that's just not enough, and I believe that because it's so competitive right now trying to find these people, and other people have higher bonuses, um, that's probably why we're not getting anything. So the way I'm looking at it is, is I would sort of agree with Commissioner Coyle, we, you know, I would, I would support this because A, it's, it's opera money, B, um, we've got to do something because we're, we're losing ground here and we've got to hire some people. Um, Allison?
Um, I brought it up to Jason because currently we have eighty-eight open positions. Yeah, we can use agency, but we're trending so high on agency costs right now. It's gonna be give. Unless we're gonna move up the rates of pay, which we're not, because we're in a contract language, so we don't have that opportunity right now. So it's not gonna, we're not gonna lose any money on this, but it'll allow us to advertise and push things through because we're not getting any hits right now. Our most critical position is LNA's. We have to lose on the ground. We can't open up other units, Jason, until we get some more LNA's. But it's not gonna hurt us because we're not gonna lose any money. In the meantime, we are working behind the scenes on what are we gonna do strategically for our recruitment, and those discussions are gonna happen with Jason, Chuck, myself, and the recruiter. Thank you.
Further comments at all from the commissions? Even on, on the motion, I'm gonna take the, uh, on the motion, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
And I will vote yes. Uh, Sheriff's Office, uh, grant agreement, Stanton Foundation K nine program.
I move to approve the standard foundation K nine program grant agreement in the amount of thirty-two thousand unauthorized care to sign all necessary documents as recommended by the High Sheriff.
Second, motion's been made, and seconded, discussion. You have discussion?
Yes.
Okay.
So, how many, I noticed that the reimbursement for our wages are for, um, weekly, like a site end for the officer, for deputy, I think is eleven hundred dollars a week.
I believe it's two and a half hours, it's three, it's three and a half overtime hours, overtime per week.
But, okay, and I, maybe I, I would say.
Commissioner, I think there might be a little confusion on what the question is. This is Catherine from Sheriff's Office.
Catherine, go ahead.
So, in the grant agreement, yes, there is additional money for, um, reimbursement of time, uh, up to eleven hundred a week for fourteen weeks. Um, and then there was an additional amount for sending them to the secondary school. Um, I believe what Major was referencing is actually the, uh, amount in the union contract, um, for our K nine officers, so just to clarify.
Thank you, Catherine. And that was my question with respect to the eleven hundred dollars per week for the fourteen weeks in training. How much over that do you expect to incur as a result of, um, or attending the training?
Catherine can confirm that, but I don't believe we overexpended, uh, the allowances for the overtime during the two trainings that we've reimbursed before. Uh, can you, can you verify that, Catherine?
Yes, bear with me for just one moment. I just want to see what that deputy's pay rate is.
And how many hours, yeah, guess we can do all of that.
So if we factor, even if that deputy had a overtime and, you know, say twenty hours a week, that'd still only be nine hundred and five dollars. Um, so I think that we're, I don't expect him to go probably beyond that. Um, would have to look and see how many hours, um, Deputy Abel was putting in during those initial trainings. Um, but I think that would be a fair assessment. I don't believe that, I believe that eleven hundred would sufficiently cover his time.
We should have the three on the floor. You have a further question?
Um, not quite yet, if anybody else.
I'm gonna go to Chuck Nicholson, he wants to chime in.
So just quickly, the three and a half is like for care of the dog after hours, so that eleven hundred would be purely for the overtime because of the training itself.
Right, we, I mean, yeah, we include the three and a half as part of collective bargaining to comply with federal requirements.
F S A, oh, yeah. Commissioner, Commissioner, do you, do you have any questions?
I do not.
Commissioner Coyle?
I was just looking at the, I mean, you still feel this is necessary when I look at the number of deployments for the past, the past year of the dog per quarter? Like, when I look at the, um, and I, I just asked for information about how the, the reports, because if you look in this, uh, just to bring everyone up to speed, there's report, there's quarterly reporting requirements as part of the contract. And it looks like the average, it's, it varies, there's some variability, like quarter four. I'm confused because, oh, yeah, so in the first four, first twenty, fiscal year twenty twenty-one, you had two deployments in quarter three, you were probably just getting up and running.
The first year is training the dog, so you can't really deploy it if it's not certified.
But it seems like, um, like for fiscal year twenty twenty-two is about fifteen to eighteen deployment.
Per quarter?
Quarter.
That's probably accurate, yeah.
So, like, you're talking like about five or six deployments a month.
But that doesn't include all the times that were requested by communities to have the dog on standby. Uh, there are a lot of times where they're like, can you have the dog there just in case this happens? Or can you have the dog in the area for this? So there are numerous occasions that that happens on a weekly basis. Just since Friday, we recalled Auburn, uh, there was a parole lead that fought with probation parole officer, fled, we recalled over to Auburn. Uh, K nine Saber tracked that individual down, uh, and they were able to scare that individual, so it was a successful track. I believe it may have been over the weekend, or it may have been Monday. We also assisted on a, uh, we also, uh, did a, an assist with a community on a motor vehicle, which resulted in the dog finding positive on a safe that was located with the dogs. There's subsequent search warrants for that right now, and then we assisted with the search warrant with the city of Exeter, town of Exeter on Monday.
Wouldn't that count as a deployment?
Those do count as deployments.
Right. So.
You know, anytime the dog actually comes out of the car, that's absolutely a deployment. There are numerous times that the dog is placed on standby to be readily available for a community because they've asked it, uh, because they're anticipating some type of use for it.
Okay, but the actual deployments are, you know, what you were describing earlier as well?
Correct.
Okay.
Further comments at all? We're ready to, we're ready to vote? Uh, okay, on the motion, Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
Commissioner Coyle?
And I'm just, you know, because I don't think we need it, but there's nothing, you have to run with the contact.
I vote yes, um, so bid waiver fails.
That was the big waiver, that was.
Those are the grant acceptance.
The big waiver is for the.
I'm way ahead of myself, I'm sorry. So, two, two, one. All right, now on the bid waiver.
I move to approve the big waiver request for East Coast K nine in the amount of nine thousand dollars as recommended by the High Sheriff.
Seconded, made, and seconded, discussion.
I, actually, I had the, um, opportunity to speak with Major Bashaw ahead of time about why there is a need for the big waiver, so I feel comfortable.
Mr. Godu, you have any questions?
No, I'm good with this.
At this point in time, I'm gonna allow, um, Major just to fill in because I'd like to hear some of.
Yeah, just so the public knows why we did the bid waiver. There are a lot of, this is an identical bid waiver to when we did the first grant, a lot of the same circumstances. Especially being that this is a, uh, private foundation, no taxpayer money, and this is not like a federal grant or a state grant being filtered down to taxpayers. So private foundation does have a lot of say in how these grant funds are expended. Uh, they like to have a say in the breeders that you use for the dog program. Uh, they give input on approvals to, uh, the dogs and the canine academies that you're authorized to use with their grant funding money. So we were steered towards, uh, some breeders. There are some breeders that, I don't want to bring up any names because I don't have the specific names in front of me, but there are some breeders who have been indicated as having genetic defects in a lot of canine units, and had to send them back, uh, to these breeders, or they have not responded well to training. So that really narrows down the scope of what we have, and then due to the time sensitivity of when this grant became available to us to meet the requirements of the grant to attend the patrol school that's scheduled for, I believe, the second week in March, uh, we have to be able to get the dog in a timely manner. There has to be a bonding time that happens between the handler and the canine before they respond to that training. And now that we have the grant acceptance, we can go forth and buy the equipment that we need to get in place to get the dog used to that equipment in the vehicles before it attends the school. So, uh, there's a lot of things that happen with the timing of litters and the age requirements that the dog has to be, and it has to be at a certain level to form. Uh, it's not like puppies where it dead set, hey, you can take them home at eight weeks. Uh, they have to be mature to a certain level before they can engage in this type of training, but we do have to have an opportunity for the, the canine to bond. So we really take a lot of input from the Stanton Foundation, being a private foundation that steers us towards approved breeders that have had success. We obviously used this breeder the last time with our canine Saber, which has been tremendously successful. And now we just feel that this bid waiver is consistent with, uh, the previous bid waiver that, that we did with the Stanton Foundation, uh, grant during the first grant process.
Thank you. Further questions? I'll take a vote, Commissioner Coyle?
Yes.
Commissioner Godu?
Yes.
I will vote yes.
Thank you.
Okay.
I'd like to make a motion that we suspend the rules for the purpose of changing the order of the agenda. Uh, I, I want to move up E in front of D. D is scheduled for nine-thirty, and I'd like to take up new business before we do that. It's only nine o'clock.
Sure, second.
Motion's been made, seconded, all those papers say I.
Right.
I need a vote, call, vote on that. Yeah, I appreciate that. Um, I was gonna do something similar, but you, you got ahead of it, which is great. I'm gonna ask, the sheriff had asked me to, um, put him in front of, uh, for updates because he's got, he's gotta go. So, I'm gonna, I'm gonna allow him to start it, if that's okay?
Nope, um, I'm continuing to be extremely busy at the sheriff's office. Um, and thank you, all of us, uh, approving our dog. It means a lot to our agency to have another dog, we can start, uh, you know, a nighttime control division, and actually a savvy, a savvy dog too. Um, we, with that added WMUR, we have a dispatch on, uh, dispatch that was part-time, it was working a full-time job, which is coming back, so we should be down to three, and we're tracking very well a new recruitment, uh, because of that, that story. Um, we continue to help enforcement, uh, with their dispatching, and it's very tough over there right now. It's very tough. So we're, we've had meetings with them. I know you're on the police commission.
Yes.
And we're working hand-to-hand to make sure that they, they're using our dispatch, it's working very well, um.
Hi Sheriff, I understand that just making that, um, that it's hard to make that transition for both sides, but I, I, I understand that, you know, obviously it's been a, very nice, a, a important help to.
Well, that's, 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 that's what we do at the sheriff's office. I mean, the sheriff's office is a tool for every leasing agency in Rockingham County, and when I ran for sheriff, that was one of the things I promised I would do, is help enforcement, or helping stand down, or helping whoever, that's what we're here to do. I'm otherwise in that? Um, Major, you have anything?
I just do want to comment. So WMUR, when we did that interview, one of the things they really highlighted for us was the three thousand dollar sign-on bonus. And I think that did have a very positive effect on that. I, I think one of the things, you know, I'm not a recruiter, this is my area of expertise, and I think one of the things the county probably struggles with is a lot of people don't know county government even exists. So they don't think of it as an opportunity to look to. So I do think these sign-on bonuses are, are incredibly helpful. I think it is, for us, for dispatchers, we have some people that maybe haven't responded to training or made it through the, the probationary period because it's a difficult job, but I did get feedback, a lot of them came because they were made aware of the sign-on bonus, and that's what kind of made them gravitate towards Rockham County.
Especially, especially with, with, with the way the economy is right now. I mean, people are hurt, and I, I can see it in my business. I mean, it was starting to slow down. I mean, luckily, I was able to hire up another auto technician finally, but it took me a year to do it, you know? And I understand the needs of the.
You know, but, but moreover, it's just in general, I also, it didn't make the final cut of the reel, but I did comment to WMUR and let them know how important it was that I think everyone worked fantastically on collective bargaining agreements over the past couple of years to get people paid appropriately. I know we were playing catch-up for a long time. Um, the fact that we're in a good place for dispatching as far as pay regionally, I, I really sense it's hard from other agencies right now, we're still struggling to find people, so I think all the efforts to adjust pay at the county level have been very fruitful. Um, but, you know, we had just played catch-up at a time where we went into a labor market and an economy that nobody ever saw coming, so we really still have challenges.
We have to thank all three county commissioners for standing by the sheriff's office and all the agencies to try to get this heavy money back to where we should be, and that's it.
Yeah, I think it just reflects, the, the actual pool of people are very limited. So you gotta be creative in getting the people's attention that you, we want to attract, which is, that's the difficulty. Do you have anything?
Yes, I, I just, um, uh, heard, um, Major Bashaw's comment about, you know, how a lot of people don't necessarily, uh, know or aware about. Know or aware about uh, you know, a career within county government, a lot of people aren't aware of what county government does. Or, you know, what different areas of, of career opportunities that we have, so that's kind of actually uh, why I had brought forward the podcast idea because. Um, I truly wanted to kind of uh, let our job seekers know in the area, but also just Rockingham County residents and beyond as well. To learn more about government and what we truly do here, um, so we'd be able to, you know, pull in, um, you know, folks like uh, the High Sheriff. And Major Bashaw to kind of talk about, you know, what career opportunities look like as a sheriff, um, or a dispatch operator and what that truly means, um. And pull in areas from all other places in the county to, uh, you know, just let. Both job seekers and, like I said, residents of Rockingham truly know what we do here on a more casual level, as opposed to an advertised. Uh, well put together type of, type of level, um, on a more casual conversation based level, so. That's truly kind of, you know, why I wanted to bring forward the path, the podcast, because it's a low-cost startup. Um, as well as being able to engage better with our community and have a, um, even further transparent, um, municipality.
Very good, thanks.
We have, we have a few irons in the fire, then we're gonna deal with.
Thank you very much.
Thank you, thank you for your time.
So it's still early, um, the presentation was set up for nine thirty, so I'm gonna, I'm gonna go.
Sort of order.
Yes.
I requested that we move, we suspended the rules to take up E before we take up D, since there's only one item.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
He was, and I'm happy to yield to the sheriff, so I know they had someplace to go.
Okay, so.
But I'd like to move to new business.
Yeah, that was already voted, that was already voted on, correct?
Correct.
All right, so new business, go ahead.
Okay, so on the new business, I would like to discuss the recruitment efforts that are going on in the, in the county in general, we got a uh. Very comprehensive report, and I would like to hear all about what you're doing and what uh, plans you might. Have for us and what's working and what's not working and.
Sure, sure, I'd be happy to share that, thank you. Um, so would we like to start with what I had kind of brought forward regarding the podcast and advertisements, or would you like to hear kind of more about? Status of what we're doing?
Sorry to ask you to move your mask again, but I just.
My apologies.
I just, I, maybe I need hearing aids, I don't know.
No worries, no worries, um, yeah, so as of current, um, here, let me get my report hold up. We have advertising throughout many, many different facets, um, but I, I continue to want to be progressive with. How we advertise, because at this point, we have a renewed generation of people that are coming into the workforce that. Um, look for positions and look for careers in a very different way than what we typically have seen in the past five, ten years. Um, so what we're currently doing, we have advertisements on all job boards to include Indeed Handshake. Uh, which is a college job board, um, College Central is also another one. Um, Care Listings is a job board for our nursing staff, so it's specifically for um, LNA's, LBNs, RNs, et cetera. Um, Government Job is our website that we use, uh, we also have jobs to go in.
What, what page you, I'm trying to, I'm wanna follow, I know you're reading from your report.
Page, page six, my apologies, yes, it is on page six, so that's where our um, current recruitment efforts are at. Um, we have um, a few partnerships through a couple associations, um, so if we ever have a more specialized position. Um, like our mental health supervisor, for example, we post that position on both the um, New Hampshire Alcohol and Drug Abuse Counselors Association. As well as the Mental Health Counselors Association, so that's just an example, but otherwise, when it comes to more specialized positions, more unique. Careers here at Rockingham, so for instance, our grant writer, uh, we posted that at the Massachusetts Municipal Association, um. As well as the New Hampshire Association of Countings, I believe, is what we posted it on. Um, so we try our best to really um, expose the uh, career opportunities that we have in any area that we can. And I've always been somebody that says, you know, if you ever have an idea, or you ever have a page that I might not be aware of, please let me know and I will look into it. Um, and we'll try our best to kind of get it exposed into any areas that we can, um, otherwise we do sponsor, oh, my apologies.
I, I, I'd like to interrupt you if you don't mind, I like to talk about the job boards, specifically. Um, wherein, how, how are you measuring which job board is effective? Or how effective any of these job boards are?
So, um, well, it's hard to say, but I can tell you that um, Indeed is, is our biggest job board, that's given us the most success. Um, out of all job boards that are out there to include career builders, zip recruiter, Indeed, you know, et cetera. Indeed has remained, um, in the last few years, the job board with the most amount of users on it, um, so that's where our largest budget is, is Indeed.
So could you provide us with some information of how many inquiries we have gotten from each job board?
Sure, sure, I, I don't have that information in front of me, but I can bring it forward for next board, if that's okay?
But, because I, I'm really trying to identify, um. Where we're spending money, and I know there's another section in your report that has the, the budget. And the budget on Indeed is, you know, eight times what all the other ones are. Which is fine, if we're getting eight times the number of recruits, you know, or inquiries at least, not, and I'm not, I'm not pointing to exact success. That we've, you know, brought in the employee, but I'm, 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 I wanna see how much activity is being created by each of these. Job boards based on, compared to how much money we're spending.
Sure.
To be on those job boards.
Sure.
Um, specifically on, on Indeed, I was on, looking at that uh, earlier. And I noticed that um, we only had a couple of comments. About the Rockingham County, and maybe, and, and the comments weren't positive. Uh, well, there were like two comments, one was positive, one wasn't, from what I saw, um. I think that needs to be addressed specifically on, on Indeed, um.
Are you, are you um, speaking on the, the, our employer page on Indeed and, and people putting comments on it on there?
Yeah, I looked up, um, yes, the, the employer page.
Okay.
And then there were comments, you know, there was one comment from last spring of somebody who was less than thrilled with uh, working. And, and then there weren't a dozen other ones of people who were thrilled. So i- if we're gonna spend money on that particular board, I think that we need to um, encourage. Our current employees to get on that board and help us out. And, and say good things about us, so that, if, especially since there's one that was a real, very mediocre, it said something like. Um. The job was fine, but the staff was incompetent, or something to that, you know, it was derogatory, and I didn't agree with it, but. Uh, the, you know, somebody who's casually looking, where do I want to work, um, I think that we, we need to. Take more, it, it is the big job board, we need to take better advantage of the comments.
I think that's a great idea.
So that people. Okay, we can move on, I've just.
No.
That was my, that was my job board discussion.
So I asked Commissioner Coyle if he had, he doesn't have any comments right now, but um. So I'm gonna, I'll chime in to be similar to Steve, because it's interesting that we're um, we're sales guys, that's what we do for a living. And when you're a business owner. You know, the way that I've been trained is, is you, you spend money for advertising, but you want to make sure that it's working. Because you're gonna direct that money to the stuff that's working. So you, we have to find measurable, um, you know, does this work, does that work, because we're spending that money. And if it's not working, then we can kind of shift money around and do different things, so I, I get what Commissioner Coyle, uh, Gaddu is talking about. Um, and, and agree, that's, you know, that's a good way to go. Uh, he brings up good comments uh, on the, on the discussion boards. I don't know if you can actually, I don't know if you can. Talk to the page to see if you can take some of the negative comments off, because sometimes it's disgruntled employees. That make uh, that make a, one of those comments, you know what I'm saying? But I don't know, I'm just, I, I'm, I'm.
I think the, the issue with, on social media is that when people are angry and upset. They, they, they're keyboard warriors and they want to get on there and tell everybody how unhappy they are. When people are happy and content, they don't go running on the boards on Yelp and everything else and say, oh boy, this is so wonderful. You know, because they're not emotionally, uh, you know, engaged with it, because they're content.
Right.
Um. And I think the way to combat that, a negative comment, is to recruit a whole bunch of positive ones.
I agree, but I also think you, just to your point, everybody understands that. That notion that the keyboard warriors like come out and punch when they have grievances, to air their grievances, like. You know, you, whether you go on Amazon or anywhere else, and the nature of online reviews, that, that, you know. People, disgruntled people are keyboard warriors is a.
Right.
Well-known phenomenon. I would just add that, I mean, I, I think you guys have been the HR team, I mean, I think you've come up with so many. Um, creative ideas in terms of expanding the scope of recruitment, I mean, and I also really appreciate. These, the recruiting effort reports, I mean, it's like the real data, because it's, it's. Allowed us to be here, engage in this conversation about getting sort of some of the tangibles to have that directed focus, so. I think seeing it, you know, seeing what these numbers about what we're investing and then getting that next set of, like, their ROI is what. You know, sort of, you're gravitating towards on these investments, it's like, I think it's, you know, useful. Going forward and, you know, an effort, an ability for us to work collaboratively to figure out, okay. This should be our next target, targeted marketing approach, so.
The podcast I want to say is something we'd really like to jump on, because no other county has that out there. And we've always been progressive in setting ourselves apart, um, she came from a county. In Florida, they had a podcast out there, not totally recruited to that, but I also. Uh, think Autumn would be uh, working with um, Jessica Wendell. Related to marketing, because that's another expertise that we could use on those podcasts with Jessica, and really. Part of the issue that we're having is, nobody knows where Rockingham County is, you talk about Brentwood. They have no concept of where we are, and I, it has been ongoing since I stepped in this door here. Unless you are in and born around this area, if you say Phillips Exeter Academy, they know where that is. But if you're talking about where we are, and I know we've talked, Jason Henry's talked about it. Um, we are not getting, um, we need to become more familiarized with the, the greater population, surrounding population, so they know it's not that far. A twenty-five minute drive is not that far from Manchester, a twenty-five minute drive, we have a lot of people over the Dover Rochester area, and we still want to pull those over. Because we've had great success with them, uh, the Portsmouth area too, and coming down a little bit from Maine, Elliott, York, Maine, that area too. The po- podcast is small dollar for a big bang, I believe, and it's getting all of the people that we would have here. At the table and beyond, our staff, like you're talking about, getting our staff on a podcast, talking about why they chose Rockingham County would be great.
Yes, I just added, uh, let me talk about not knowing where Rockingham County is, uh. Lot of my staff do drive almost an hour away, but, because they heard from another person that's here. Um, with the, what we've done in the county, at least over the jail, raising the pay to a certain level, we're. Able to attract a much uh, a, a larger audience, including some people out of Massachusetts, other jails, which have. Looked, but only those that know, have applied your bid before, I think we can expand the market to other places, because the money is correct now. Um, this, realistically, it's hard to live in Rockingham County, it's very expensive, you know, you have those um. You know, real estate agents suck up the money, oh, sorry, um, but you have, you have a lot of, it's just very tough down here, but. We have a good group of people outside of here, if we can expand that even further, I think, or podcast, or anything we can do. Because this is a, a great area, especially Portsmouth, there are no draws down here, for young staff to do things, so it's very important.
So, um, I'd be comfortable um, renewing a motion with respect to the podcast, um, because I think there is some time sensitive nature, um. Your concerns?
Well, we were talking about job boards, and all of a sudden we started talking about podcasts, and I'm not done talking about job boards. And we don't have a motion on the floor about podcasts, I'm not necessarily against it, I want to hear all about the podcast, but. Okay, so, uh, also a question about the job boards, how do we pay for, um. How are the charges? Uh, incurred? We have a hundred positions, I would assume that you're not posting a hundred positions.
Sure.
If you are, then that probably ought to be changed.
No, so, um. When it comes to like a corrections officer, for example, I'm not posting corrections officer first shift, corrections officer second shift, we're just posting corrections officer. So that they can have further conversation once.
So there's one ad for correction officers?
Correct, um, now regarding how those charges come through, uh, basically we pay for these Indeed, you know, softwares. For the year, so it's an annual charge, and then we also um, sponsor specific jobs, so um, positions that are.
Is it annual charge?
Uh, correct, so, correct, there's an annual charge for Indeed itself to be able to use the platform.
And how much is that?
Um.
Approximately?
And my apologies, I.
Okay, so you can update us with those.
Yeah, yeah, I'll, I'll make sure to include that when I give you the statistics on um, exactly how many people are clicking on our positions. Um, but how those charges are incurred is we sponsor specific jobs that are very high need in this, in this um. Uh, organization, so including corrections officers, LNA's, registered nurses, um, some um, positions here and there that are, that are high need. Uh, like our active base coordinator, at one point we sponsored, um, so we sponsor those positions, and I base those sponsorships off of uh, the level of need. And then um, the charges are incurred when people click on our ad, so basically the sponsorship, um. Puts the ad that would most likely go to the bottom of the list, more towards the top of the list, so that if people search for LNA. They see our ad first, before ads that are not sponsored, um, and then when they click on that ad, that's when we incur the charges. When that job seeker actively engages with the advertisement that we have.
So another thing that I noticed was that, um. And, and maybe I didn't search properly, but it said there were no current jobs in Rockingham County. And I know that was wrong, because I saw some posted, um, but I also noticed that. The, some of the jobs say had been posted thirty days ago, or some might say sixty days, I mean, we've been working on this for a year. So, I mean. I think jobs, the postings should be canceled. And then reposted, so that they, you know, when a job seeker comes and looks at. A posting and says, well, this, this has been on the, here for a hundred and twenty days, and they're still looking to recruit. Boy, it mustn't be a very good job, if, you know, a good place to work, if it takes this long to find somebody. So to repost and make it like it's new, um, might improve. The number of people who will click through.
You're, you're very right, and unfortunately with Indeed, um, they are getting a little bit stricter on how we can post our positions, so. If we cancel positions and repost them too often, they actually flag the position, and you're unable to post it further from there. So being that we're sponsoring these high-level positions that have been open for thirty-plus days, um, those will always remain going to the top of the list. Now, I can repost positions, you know, once it's been a little while, I just try to be very careful when it comes to reposting them too often, so that Indeed. Doesn't flag our postings, um.
So maybe we need to know those rules, so that we're getting the maximum benefit. You know, how often does Indeed allow you to cancel and repost?
Um, well, the issue isn't that, it's, if we don't sponsor it, it can go up there and it stays up there. But every time a new employer goes in to do an LNA, that's gonna go ahead of ours. We don't want to, ever want our LNA's to be on the bottom, so we're sponsoring those, eight hundred dollars a month, it could be a thousand dollars a month, depending on where our critical need is.
Oh, it's that much?
Oh yeah, it's a very expensive, Indeed is the premier platform national, you're not, it used to be what Monster was years ago.
Right.
Indeed has taken over the market, it is the one driven national number one platform throughout the USA. And there used to give a lot of freebies and a lot of, a lot, you know, to get to where they are. But now they've put in all these cost containment of how you can advertise to get yours up above somebody else.
Anything goes as far as, um, if we put sign-on bonus in the title, they require us to sponsor the position. So that we can have the sign-on bonus in the title, so uh, it's, they're very, very specific.
Because they know where they are, they own the market, that is your market, we're not doing newspapers, there's no driving newspapers, um, we're not doing that. We can't afford LinkedIn, LinkedIn, we've looked at, it's almost forty, fifty thousand dollars. For a LinkedIn advertisement that we looked at, a platform for them. And when we looked at why we'd want to go with LinkedIn, currently with what we were doing Indeed, LinkedIn is really for your high-level managerial positions. It's not gonna meet the needs of the county, so our platform right now is Indeed, and um. You know, you can talk to any of the other HR counties too, if that's where we're going, um. Everybody's gone away from newspaper, everyone's gone away from magazine, a lot of, it's a lot of social media-driven platforms now. That are being for the pop, the gender population that we're trying to attract here too as well. To get people in the door for long-term careers such as, you know, correctional officers that'll go up through the ranks, um. LNA's that may start here that go to LPN RN, uh, just trying to get that, but we do have hits. There's algorithms that they run behind the scenes, that, you know, they run them, so that that's how they know where they're marketing, but. We can tell you how many hits we get, we can tell you how it's driven, and we can tell you the cost containments around sponsorship. If we had an extreme position that we knew we wanted to have, say like a long-term care administrator position. We would probably sponsor that at maybe a thousand, two thousand dollars to get it up there, to get it out there, so that we can get a bulk of good. Quality candidates coming forward, um, it's all how much you want to pay for the different ones, so right now, our focus has been on correctional officers. We had dispatchers out there and any nursing positions. We had the shift tech up there a couple times at different sponsorship levels to try to get it. But it's just a field that we're not finding any success, success with in those that are going into that field. So we kind of put that down to try. So we kind of put that down to try to drive something up. We're balancing because our end dollar, we have an end dollar. And we can't go above that end dollar. So we're moving the money around for different sponsorship levels to meet the needs each month as we're tracking.
Right. And when it comes to, you know, those very tough to fill positions like Jude's, their shift technician. Um, I, we have tried to go more of a grassroots level as well. So we try to get exposures in various different areas. Um, so the third ship technician, along with the plumbers and other positions that Jude has opened. Uh, we posted at local trade schools in the area. Uh, they have, uh, you know, uh, job boards on their bulletin boards in the classrooms that you can see. So I put a QR code on there. Um, so that's at both the Granite Trade, uh, Granite State Trade School and New Hampshire School of Mechanical Trades. Um, I want to say those are both within fifteen minutes of our, uh, facility. So, um, we have posted the positions there as well. So when it comes to a position not necessarily working for the job board that we're on, um. Then I will try to go out and see what other avenues we might be able to pull from in order to get exposure to the correct people.
Okay, well, that's great. I'm good with job boards for now. We'll, we can continue that discussion when we get some data and stuff.
Um, are you comfortable with me making a motion with respect to, before I make a motion, with respect to the, um, podcast?
I, I would like to know what the total cost is for the pod- podcast specifically.
Two thousand dollars.
Two thousand dollars?
And the, the thing that I found, um, just to speak on it a little bit is. A lot of the costs to generate the podcast is infrastructure, like it's like microphones or equipment, right? And, um, the thing about the equipment is it would be usable throughout the county. So it's not just a one and done, like we're dumping two brand in and you're never, that's a single ROI on the, like, use of those. Those resources, we're gonna, the microphones could be used in other applications. So I just thought in, or this back screening those them.
Just, my issue with that is that it was tied into the outdoor advertising as one. So, yes, I'm soundable.
I had the same concern.
All right, so, if you guys would listen to me just really quickly for a second, since it's nine thirty, we can have this discussion later if we want to. But since it's nine thirty and we invited guests to be here, I'd like to do that part of it first and then we can rehash whatever we're going to do after that.
Let's make a motion for the podcast.
Well, first off, if, on the motion that, we already tabled that, so there's two ways of moving around that to this. Hold on a second. Get me out. You can take back your second and your motion to table and then we can discuss it. If not, if you two want to make a motion to overrule the chair, then so be it.
Mr. Chairman, wouldn't it simply be easier to make, uh, if I made a new motion just with respect? Because that's mostly currently what we tabled was with respect to the podcast and the coast bus. So I think, um, I could make a motion, bring forward a motion that is just with respect to the podcast. We can move forward. It's nine twenty-eight. We're done in two minutes and.
Yeah, I agree. I, I don't agree because it's part of the package. So like I mentioned, the only way you're going to discuss that is you can either overrule the chair. Or take back your motions to table.
I'm gonna make a motion. I moved to approve utilization of category six point one revenue replacement of the Harper project to fund the rock talk.
Excuse me, you're out of order because this has been a tabled motion. We've already tabled, both of us voted to table it. Why are you bringing it back up? It's out of order. So make a new motion. If you so choose.
I make a motion to overrule the chair to make a mo- motion with respect to the podcast.
Okay, motion's been made to overrule the chair. Do I hear a second? I mean, none, motion fails. So, in this, Mr. Uh, Commissioner Godu.
Just one second to allow me to get my thoughts together. I'd like to make a motion to, um. Approve two thousand dollars for the podcast. And to fund that podcast will utilize. The category six point one revenue replacement of the Harper project funds.
Commissioner, the motion is out of order because it was tabled originally off of the agenda.
That was not what the motion on the agenda was.
Yes, it was. So, like I said, Peter.
There's a, there's a motion and a second.
Allowing it. So the only way you're going to do is to overrule the chair.
Motion to overrule the chair.
Motion made and seconded, all those in famous AI. I have quotes.
I make a motion to approve utilizing category six point one revenue replacement of the Harper project funds. For the pot rock talk podcast for a total of two thousand dollars.
Second.
Motion's been made and seconded. Is there a discussion? I haven't seen discussion. So, we're spending two thousand dollars on the equipment, correct?
Correct. And my apologies, and ongoing software for the, um, editing the podcast before we posted.
So it's two thousand dollars plus or two thousand included?
So two thousand includes all of our equipment plus one, one year and however many ones we have left until the next budget year. Um, for the software. So that's all inclusive for until our next, um, fiscal year. So fiscal year. Twenty-four, twenty-five would be, that would be until then.
Um, so I have more discussion. So, I'm, I'm well aware of podcasts, um, and. YouTube video. Um, being from the real estate market, we've, we've talked about podcasts before. Seems that there's more people that are going towards video. Now, uh, we, we do this for the meetings now. We have YouTube videos and there's no cost involved in that. Would, wouldn't it be better serve us if we were to do the show that you're talking about? Or the, the interviews with people using, um, YouTube? And then we can post it to our page because we have a YouTube page.
Correct. So we would be able to utilize, um, both video and the audio from that podcast. So we would have cameras and, um, you know, that would be posted onto our YouTube. And then the audio from that podcast would be posted onto various other platforms like Spotify and Apple Music.
And that's perfect because that's where I was going to go with that. In the town of Dairy, and I'm, I'm assuming the town of Salem would be very similar. You can do a YouTube video and do the video and then you can take the audio from that YouTube video and post that as the podcast. So, in essence, you really wouldn't need to spend two thousand dollars for the specialized equipment. The microphones, you know what I'm saying?
See, so I think it is necessary to have the equipment for the podcast as currently we don't have a camera that is set up to be able to record thirty plus minutes of footage. Um, other things would be, uh, you know, microphones so that we can feed those microphones into the software. Um, the software that I have, um, put into the motion is a software that basically automatically edits our podcast for us. So it won't be taking up too much of my time. So I can spend more time on recruitment. Um, and it takes that, um. Audio from the podcast puts it into what's called an RSS feed. And that RSS feed is what we can put into both Spotify and, um, Apple Music to post the audio. Now regarding the video, if, if we don't get, um, equipment, so things like microphones, um, a backdrop, lighting and cameras. It will look more like an office as opposed to a podcast. So that's more along the aesthetics of the podcast. So that when we do post it to YouTube, um, it's a little bit more on professional, uh, lines as opposed to kind of just in an office.
Yeah, and I have one more, but I'll finish it.
Oh no, I was just, um, in the, in the support hearing identified the camera as well as some of the other, but backdrop and lighting in terms of the. Cost so that.
Any of that at all? All right, so let me continue if you don't mind. Um. So in the town of Dairy, uh, we're able to use the public access channel. Uh, I'm sure Portsmouth got one, I'm sure Salem definitely well. That already have all of this equipment. They have the videos, cameras, professional. They have the podcast microphones there. Would it, would it be beneficial to be able to use, uh, an off-site place to accomplish what we want to accomplish?
Um, I think that's certainly something we can talk about, but when I was first looking at this podcast, I was looking at just setting it up in my office. So that when it comes to time constraints and being able to pull people out of their positions. So, you know, people like Jason Henry, Jason Smith, Michelle Lanchin Smith, um, to come into my office, that we won't be traveling to places like Dairy. In order to get that podcast completed, as it is something I want to do, um, consistently, you know, once per month. If we can do twice per month, that would be great. Um, and being able to do that in my office so that not too much travel is incurred. That would be, um, you know, more beneficial to do all of our times.
Okay, thank you for that answer. Any other discussion? All right. Would you like to do now?
Move the question.
Okay, uh, so the, did we get a second? So motion's been made and seconded on the motion.
Yes.
Uh, Commissioner, well.
Yes.
And I will vote no. And the reason is, is I think we've got, um, other equipment in different towns that we can utilize. We don't have to spend that money. But two to one. All right, all right, let's, um, let's go on since now nine thirty-eight, I'm gonna.
Yeah, there's lots more discussion I think that we need to have about the recruitment. But I, I agree, it's time to move on so that we can have our presentation. And if you wouldn't mind, a very brief recess. Uh, and then our.
How much time do you need?
A minute.
Well, let's do, let's do, let's do a couple of minute recess so people can get a copy or whatever and then we'll, we'll start up and we'll, we'll have our presentation.
Very good.
Okay, um, we're back from our break. I'm making this over to June, so she'll be making introductions and, uh.
Um, we have today the esteemed folks from Warren Street Revision and Harvey Construction. This is a long awaited, um, introduction. And, um, Jonathan has been updated for us. Where, how we got to here, we've been holding off for a little bit. There was so much going on at one time.
Yeah.
I think Jonathan has plans and he's going to be happy to invite folks to have a look at, um.
And, and before you start, um, we want to introduce you to our newest commissioner, Commissioner Godu, who's come on board. Um, and he, he has looked at the packet that, uh, that we all had earlier. Um, so we want to welcome. You all and hopefully you guys will be able to talk and meet and we're going to have another discussion later.
So we met earlier. I don't know if I've met, I've met everybody else. I don't, I don't think I've met you, but. Uh, so again, my name's Jonathan Hawley. Thank you for having me. Um, with me is Rob Corneer with Harvey Construction, who's the construction manager that has been chosen for the job. And Dan Weeks with Revision Energy that is doing the solar farm project. Um, so I'm, I'm, stop me at any point if you have any questions, um, but I'm just going to give you a quick update. Of the challenges and where we've been and where we are and we'll go from there. Um, so at this juncture, looking down fifty thousand feet, the construction drawings.
Can I just interrupt you? Are we recording?
Yes, yes.
Cause I didn't hear the thing say.
Yeah, I did.
I did, okay, my apology.
No, that's fine. So I brought a copy of the contract documents, the construction documents for, um, this particular project. The municipal building. Um, for your benefit, Mr. Good, Goodo, um. Uh, the project is a hundred and ten thousand square feet. It incorporates the sheriff's department on the first floor. Community corrections in the back, on the, on the ground level. Second floor is county attorney and third floor is the registry of deeds. Um, I personally have been engaged with the county since the early two thousands and have done multiple projects here on and off. Um, I've been engaged with this project for almost four years. We started with the early studies. We, we did a space allocation. We did, I've, I've been through the whole gamut of. Um, how we got to this point. So I'll answer any questions that you have along the way. Um, in the last sixteen months, we've had weekly and bi-weekly meetings with all of the users, the, the sheriff's department. Corrections department, um, registry of deeds and the, and the county attorney with their staff. Uh, which includes the engineers, which includes utilities and, um. So it's been a very collaborative process along the way. Um, early in the process, um, probably a little more than a year and a half ago. When we went from conceptual design to, um, a contracted design, the building. Um, we put out, uh, RFQs for construction managers. We competitively bid that. Um, Harvey Construction was selected early in the process. Um, and they have been engaged, um, and on the phone and in person with us for the last sixteen months. They provided, I believe, four estimates along the way, the last one being in October. Um, and that's how we budgeted the process and, and done the design along the way, trying to be accountable to the early numbers that we put together. Um, Dan Weeks, um, with Revision has been working with us for a little over a year. Um, he's responsible for the solar farm. When, when the land on the other end of the farm sort of fell through because of wetlands and other things. Um, the county made a switch and we incorporated it into this project. It's funded separately and it is actually two separate projects. But it's going to fall under Harvey's purview, if you will, in terms of how we get it done. The solar farm is on the backside, the south side of the site. Um, and the, the new municipal building, for all intents and purposes, on, is on the hill, if you will. Um, so I'm just going to give you a little, um, a little history here. So we started with a conceptual design probably two and a half years ago. Um, we did a video, we did, you know, uh, a fly around. We sold it, if you will, we sold the project to the county, to the delegation. Um, all with the, the presumptions that we could build close to the front of that hill. Um, as we engaged in the design process and the due diligence upfront, um, we hit a couple of snags. Um, along the way, uh, the Corps of Engineers reclassified wetlands. Um, wetlands up until January of this last year, anything under, um, ten thousand square feet was considered a small application. Um, um, and more administrative, it would run right through DES. Corps of Engineers reclassified that and they classified anything five thousand square feet or more was a major application. A major application with DES, um, during the AOT process. Opens a lot of other, um, issues and concerns with division of historic resources, with archaeology, with fishing game, wildlife. All the rest of those things. As we started the due diligence process, we hired Miller Engineering and we did borings. Um, and what happened is trying to place the building with regards to the wetlands. And, and the boring reports that came back, we found clay from nine feet to forty feet below the surface. On half of the site. So if you can imagine when you walk, when you come out the road for community corrections for the, for the, for the jail. And you look directly up, if you were to say, all right, I'm going to draw a line, everything to the left, half of the building sits on clay. Half of this site is gravel. So we, um, because of the wetlands, we moved the building back. Um, to, to reduce the impact in wetlands. When we did that, we had to take into con- into account. The clay material that we found on site. Which pushed us into the protective radius of well number two, um, that feeds the whole county. So in order to have the amount of property that we needed to build the site, we had to move well two. So we have just spent the last six months doing test wells. Um, Barry Miller was hired, um, who's done work on campus and done the well work here for twenty years. We found a well site, respective well site that produced, um, the quantity of water that we needed. South of the first well, um, and we've just completed pounding an eighteen inch casing to eighty feet of refusal. Um, and they've taken samples along the way. So we have a site for the new well. We're going to decommission well two, which allows us to put the building where we are. Um, what came out of the clay issue, um, in order to, to mitigate the construction issues regarding that. The fill for the site is going to be recycled glass. That's the only way to accomplish because we have to reduce the weight of the site and the building to sit it on the clay substrate in the ground. There's a lot of sort of moving pieces that, that have taken place over that. So. The long story around the site is that the civil engineering has been delayed almost six months. Because we had to know we had a well that we could replace before we could site the building to complete the drawings to get it to AOT. So, Novus Engineering, who's the civil engineer for this project, submitted AOT drawings, um, at the first of the year. We expect AOT alteration of terrain with the state D, DES. Um, so they've submitted drawings. The state has sixty days to comment. We're expecting comments back by the end of February. So collaboratively working with the team. Um, we made some very educated decisions along the way to make up some of the schedule, if you will. So Novus was engaged to get the civil drawing package done. And into the state before we just literally two days ago finished pounding the casing for the well. Based on the material they take out of the well, they designed the, the, um, the screen. That needs to be as the base, basically for the filter pumps that go in, in the gravel packed well. That's going to take a couple of weeks for them to engineer the, the, the screen. Then we do the permitting, then we have to do a drawdown test and pump test, and there's all sorts of testing. So that well will probably not come online until April or May. Um, but we needed to know that so that we could site the building. So there's, there's that, that's, that's occurring. Um, with the AOT permit, um Cindy Balkis with the environmental, with, with wetlands, has been in conversation with DES and Fish and Game. Um, a year ago, Fish and Game was given a lot more authority than they had previous, previously had. Um, so they have actually made it a very big issue. We have two meadow lark birds that nest in the field across the street that we have been in negotiations with them for um eight months.
With the birds?
With the birds.
Are we getting anywhere?
So.
And the turtle.
And the turtle.
Well, the, the, I guess the point I'm trying to make is Fish and Game wouldn't do anything, render an opinion, anything definitive until we actually got the AOT application in. In order to get the application in, we had to have full civil engineering drawings. So that discussion, um, DES and, and fish and wildlife is brought in when the application is before DES. So that happened the first of January. Cindy has been talking with them on an, on an ongoing basis. And this is a much bigger discussion that we don't need to have this morning. But Fish and Game, um, their initial take and their initial proposition is they want um a coveted easement on the entire county property. Thou shall not ever build anything more on that side of the road. They want to save the, the, the.
Fields.
The wildlife fields for that meadow lark, which is an endangered species. The, the, really, the, the um, the funny conversation about that is they would prefer that we never touch that land and we leave it. But if you left those fields and you didn't cut them, they would return to forest and there, the environment that they need would go away over time. You know, it might take fifty to a hundred years, but it would eventually become forest again. So at this particular point, this conversation needs to happen. Jude's been engaged with Cindy and with Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Games, New Hampshire Fish and Game around um, the, the commissioners are not going to agree to that kind of easement. Um, and I'm just going to guess, this is my opinion, where this is gonna end up. The county is going to be required to make a payment into the Fish and Game Wildlife.
Yeah.
Similar to the Wetlands Board, if you impact the wetlands and you can't mitigate on site, you pay into the, the state wetlands um account and they mitigate wetlands somewhere else. I think what's gonna happen is Fish and Game is gonna come back and there's gonna be um a payment required in order to get our approvals for AOT. So I'm just prefacing that and setting you up to understand that I'm gonna need a check at some point and it's probably significant money.
The commissioners have talked about this, they're aware of it. We ran the numbers based on the formulas, it goes town by town.
Yeah.
As I recall, it was on the order of fifty. It was on the order of fifty thousand dollars.
That's what we.
That's the guess.
Yeah.
Yeah, and that, I mean, that was, the formula was probably six months ago, but that's what it was looking at, looking like. Certainly less of a risk than a conservation easement. You don't know if you're gonna need that land for, you don't know what you're gonna need to take care of the citizens and how to follow this all.
Okay. So we've resolved the issues of citing the building by, by building on another well. That was an added scope of work that was added to our contract. That's well underway, um, should be completed online, April, May-ish, that's the goal here. Um, they've had some problems with drilling and equipment failure and weather and those kinds of things. So that's all going. Um, we've solved the issue of the unsuitable soils, which are basic clays, um, which are basically rampant everywhere in this, in Brentwood, um, but specifically up on the hill. Um, we've moved the belt building back. We have, we, we have the application into the state. There has been no conversation back and forth. The unfortunate thing is state AOT DES, um, there's only one person that reviews AOT permits in the state and he's completely overwhelmed. So we expect it's gonna take, on the sixtieth day, we'll get their comments back. And some of those comments may be, we just need more clarification of, they will grant us a meeting at, after that point to try to resolve those issues. And then there's gonna be the conversation about Fish and Game, the wildlife. Um, it, it's, you know, it's two birds in the field and um, and a turtle that they say um lays eggs in the field, but the ironic thing here is turtles can't walk in hay. So um, they really don't come up out of the marsh. Um, that's another whole story. Um, the um. So those are the, the issues here. Um, we are at a hundred percent construction documents. They're here for, I'm gonna invite you over to look at the drawings. Um, in terms of the process, um, we had a last commissioning meeting scheduled for today, which we postponed till Tuesday because you guys were meeting today. Um, but Jude will be part of, part of that with all of the engineers. The commissioning agent is out of Burlington, Vermont. He's been involved with the process all along. So he kind of scrutinizes the design and, and that's involved in. Um, so there'll, there'll be one last revision of our drawings, dotting the i's, crossing the t's. Our expectation is to have finished final drawings to Harvey by the twenty-eighth and it will, Harvey will put it out to bid.
February, February.
February twenty-eighth, I'm sorry, yeah. Concurrently, as soon as the drawings are done, um, and correct me if I'm wrong, Jude, the town of Brentwood has said, we're not gonna inspect this. We don't have anything to do with the county facilities. So in order, this is the same issue that we have in Sullivan County. Um, in order, somebody needs to inspect it. So we lean on the state fire marshal's office. Um, they will act as the building inspector and they will do all of the inspections at a cost. I can tell you that the Sullivan project, um, which is a um three-year bill, this is anticipated to be a two-year bill. That bill with um, with the state fire marshal's office was a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. Um, so they have electrical, mechanical, plumbing, all of the trade engineers on staff. They will come in and act as the building inspector and they will actually issue the CBO um at the end of the job. I don't know. Go ahead.
Just a quick question. So do we have in writing that the town of Brentwood has waived their right to inspect?
So they did this at the last project that we did at the nursing home. We invited the building inspector and the fire department to participate in the meetings, but they didn't actually issue a, they didn't do anything.
So we have nothing in writing, though?
The commissioners met with the board of selectmen. I would imagine it's in the minutes, they were pretty emphatic.
Oh, that's the meeting that Tom Tom Morello had, I think.
Yes.
Planning and everything.
And there's a select person who used to be a something.
It's, it's become a standard of.
Oh.
Across the state.
That was a while ago.
Yeah. The counties don't fall under the jurisdiction of the local municipality that they're in.
Right, that's for planning. So we're exempt from, you can, you can go in front of planning, but they can't deny it. Municipality has its own.
Right, they didn't even want us to go to the planning.
That's different from housing.
No, I'm talking about the planning salary, but anyway.
We didn't go to the planning board in Brentwood.
No, but Tom Tom Morello did, he had a Zoom meeting in front of the planning.
We went to the select people, the select board and they, um, they were very supportive. They were really excited that we were gonna use revision and they um acknowledged that they had no interest in.
Yeah.
To inspection.
I would just feel a little bit more comfortable if I had something in writing, only because from the standpoint of boards change.
I don't know, I think it was probably preserved in the minutes.
If it is, then that's fine.
Yeah.
Then we have a writing, but, but.
I'll dig up the minutes.
Okay, thank you, I'm sorry to interrupt.
No, I mean, we've had um early conversations that, at the end of the project that we recently did across the street um, and moving into this one, the, the building inspector and the fire chief. Um, this is outside of their purview. They don't have the staff, they don't have the time nor the interest to be responsible for doing the inspections. So, I mean, if we can get something in writing, that's fine. If not, we're still anticipating.
Yeah.
That they're not involved and the fire marshal office is aware of it and they're anticipating it.
Okay.
The cost of those inspections are not undermined, they'll be part of the GMP um budget, if you will, including testing and special inspections and all of that. Um, so that, that'll be summarized there.
So is there no other choice? State Fire Marshal, then we don't have anybody else? Okay.
Um, Brentwood is very comfortable with the state fire marshal's office as well.
Good.
I mean, obviously, it's the state fire marshal's office, they're okay with it.
Yeah.
Yeah, um, so moving forward, um, we wrap the drawings up in two weeks. Um, they're essentially done, I brought them here, we can, we can get up and look at them. Um, final drawings go to Harvey on the twenty-eighth, they put it out to bid. I believe Harvey is looking to have a GMP in place the end of March and with a construction start early April. Um, it may take them a while to mobilize and I'm gonna let Rob speak to that. Um, uh, and then from April, we're talking about two years of construction to put the building up and put it online. Um, so I don't know, Rob or Dan, one of you wanna go first?
Before you go, before you go.
I'm not going anywhere.
You, you mentioned um that we got an estimate in October.
Yeah.
I haven't seen that paperwork.
Well, Rob's here, he can speak to that.
The estimate came from, from you?
Harvey, yeah, yeah.
Okay, um, because I, I'm looking for a budget, a detailed budget.
Yeah.
Has that been prepared by anyone yet?
Yes, Harvey. Harvey has been involved with since the conceptual design almost a year ago and has provided estimates at each interval of schematic design, design development. October was eighty percent construction drawings. They've been talking with subs, major subs that will be involved here. Um, so.
I'm just, I'm, I'm the new guy, I haven't seen that. I've got a, a, a summary analysis of what the cost might be, but I don't have a budget.
I'm interviewing.
Reviewing one.
Good morning, um, Rob Corneer from Harvey Construction. And to your point, there are detailed estimates, um, line item by line item, line item by line item. Um, each trade, um, it started off in that seventy-four plus range and in October it was about seventy-six million dollars. That includes the ten million dollars of um revisions costs for solar, the solar field. It uh, the, the increase was pretty much reflective um from site work. The site increases, the civil, the civil changes. And there were some electrical, but other than that, the numbers have pretty much held throughout the past year or so.
So my understanding is that you were, this was a sixty-eight million dollar project. Is it now a seventy-six million dollar project?
Well, he's including solar, which is really a standalone, he's, he's including the tour.
The building piece of it is sixty-six.
The solar, they're still, okay.
The, the solar is ten point one million all in.
Yeah.
Um, and that includes the solar array and what they're doing in the parking lot and what have you. And that was added on to the sixty-six.
Yeah.
So we're under that sixty-eight million dollars at this point. As Jonathan mentioned, we're in the position of going up to hit the street. I think it's a great time to hit the market, to be honest with you. People are, people are uh hungry to kind of.
Yeah.
Fill their, fill their workload for the next two years. So we always say December, January, February is a really good time to go out to the market. We're gonna be into March, but um, we've got people hungry. There's a lot of excitement going on around through the trades. Um, we anticipate, as Jonathan mentioned, a, a end of March GMP presented to you. I think the start date is May first, um, the latest revision of the, of the schedule. And that gets us on a twenty-four month schedule. So we're looking to break ground very beginning of May. Um, what else? So, so the schedule's good, bid market's good, budget's good. Are the three things that I think I can, I can quickly bring you up to speed on and let you know that we're pretty confident what's going on.
So for the, for the subs, are there no issues with the subs? Um, as far as, as you well know, we, we're using ARPA money to help pay for a portion of that bid building. And those monies have to be spent under a certain time criteria, which is gonna be critical. So um, this, you know, having, I, I know you're doing a job in Lunandary in my neighborhood, right down the road on the, on Baldwin. So, and that thing seems to be going up pretty quickly. You don't anticipate any delays with subs or anything?
I don't, I don't. And, and, and this is a, this is a beefy enough job that we're gonna get a lot of attention by very highly qualified subs with resources. Um, the, the, the whole, a year ago escalation was out of control. Today, um, I'm not saying prices have gone down, but they've leveled off a little bit. So that's a bonus, I think, for the county. Lead time is not nearly as crazy as it was, generators, transformers, those are still a year out. But um, things have kind of gotten back into a manageable supply chain mode. Um, so, so we're not worried about that either. There may be some situations and we've probably talked about that, Chuck, our, our folks about maybe pre-purchasing some equipment, storing it or materials that might be a little further out. But we want, we wanna make sure, our goal is to not, when we, when we need the materials and equipment, we want it here.
Yeah.
We don't wanna, we don't wanna start the job and then get to a point where we have to wait. We think we have it all figured out. There's, just as a point of reference, I mean, we have this five-page, pretty detailed schedule bringing us all the way through the project. Um, the, the detail and the estimate is, is, is pretty extensive in terms of what, rounding out where, where we are in terms of scope and, and labor. So we're feeling pretty good about where we're at right now and uh, I think the market's primed for us to, to go bid it and, and get going. And the schedule seems to be pretty good, pretty, lining up pretty well as well. I think the, the, the major thing is that we don't slow down, we don't lose any momentum. We get this out on the street and we get a bid. Um, I know that um Harvey just started Sullivan County in December. Um, they're probably, you know, call it the end of, the, the beginning of February, they're probably fifty percent bought out already. Um, I think it's really important that once we bid it, and the GMP is signed and Harvey has the contract to move forward, they're gonna enter into buying this job out right away so that we're not subject to escalations and other things, the contracts. So the subs can go back and make commitments um and lock in their pricing.
What are they doing in Sullivan? They should add on to the nursing home.
Yeah. And, and um, that is true. I think it's very important to lock in as quickly as we possibly can across the board on, on subcontractors too.
And, I mean, this might be somewhat granular, so um, but just diving down a little bit into the point of pre-buying things. I mean, if you look, if you follow raw lumber prices, you can see they've like, they came down, they dipped down and they're like going back up a little bit right now. Like, would it be worth buying a lot, you know, pre-buying all of our lumber or things like that once you get the subs in place? Because I suspect the prices are gonna tip back up and if we lock in early, are these things that you guys are?
Oh, yeah, we're attuned with, we, we're on a, we, we track the market in every trade and every material pretty much on a daily basis. Subcontractors like to work with us.
Yeah.
Um, so they give us lots of heads up, so to speak, in terms of beware. Um, this price might go up on this date, it gives us the opportunity to lock in a little sooner. Um, so, so yeah, that, we, we're gonna have a strategy that goes along with our GMP that talks about, you know, th- these are our recommendations and what we should buy now. And to your point, Commissioner, that's gonna allow us to spend some of that ARPA money earlier than expect, earlier, earlier than maybe even the. Just to, you wanna say Chuck, I'm sorry.
It's worth pointing out that Chuck and Harvey have been working together or started very early on and identified which items in the project are ARPA um qualified. And Harvey's already breaking that out for us so that as each expense comes through, Chuck's gonna know right away, this is good for ARPA, this is, you know, the bond. So he, they already have that break down i- at a really detailed level.
Yeah.
So that's gonna help us a lot.
And the good news, as Commissioner Quill reported earlier, um, there's less strings attached to some of that money, which is, that gives us a little more freedom.
Our loss revenue reporting has gone up, which makes more, I mean.
We know, yeah, we don't have to report on this.
Well, to, the benefit of that exercise that we've, we've gone through and we continue to go through is that we're able to put those requirements into the bid packages with the subcontractor. So when they bid the project through us, they know what the rules are, they know what the expectations are. Um, not just schedule, not just budget, but how we break out that budget and what, what we can buy early, um, and what we anticipate buying early. So we're in pretty good shape. Good. The, the, two things to point out, we do have a CM contingency, we do have an owner's contingency. We also have an escalation contingency in terms of what the market fluctuation in the market. So that's all built into the numbers that we're talking about. Um, the conversation between Harvey and Chuck, you know, the, the ARPA piece, my concern is we're six months delayed here. Um, and the ARPA money has a date certain have to be sent, spent by. So I, I wanna emphasize that um I'm not anticipating anybody stopping, moving the momentum at this point because the, the quicker we can get contracts in place and we can get, you know, money spent, it's, it goes back to Chuck.
Yeah.
Requirements of spending by a certain date, um, and which is really important.
Right, so Chuck, just to, for the public, um, it has to be expended by a certain, I mean, it has to be tagged for a certain.
Yeah, so, so it has to be obligated in the federal definition, so everything under contract by the end of twenty twenty-four as far as December. Their first twenty twenty-four period of performance can run all the way to the end of, of twenty twenty-six. Obviously, we don't want that, but everything. But everything for an ARPA source anyways would have to be, even loss revenue piece has to be um committed, obligated under contract by the end of twenty twenty-four.
We're expecting completion April, spring of twenty-six, which is six months prior to the, to that deadline that he's been due. But I wanna have Dan um speak a little bit about the solar field and the issues that the schedule that we're looking at.
Okay, and then uh, yeah, if you wanna just, yeah, to chalk up the solar. I mean, originally the solar was just this ball. It was covered parking, solar on top of that, but with the ARPA money that showed up, we actually decided that it would be beneficial to the taxpayers to do oh, five megawatts of um of solar panel to offset the cost, but oh.
Thank you, Chairman. Um, Dan Weeks, nice to meet you, Commissioner. I've had the pleasure of presenting in the past um to the other commissioners and working quite extensively with Jude and Chuck and other members of the staff. By way of brief introduction, Revision Energy is actually based a couple miles down the road here in Brentwood. Um, very excited to have begun working on this project now, just about three years ago, March of twenty twenty, when the building was first being designed and we were asked to do some, some conceptual designs, starting with a focus on carport options. Um, and a partial ground mount just behind. Um, and then obviously that's pivoted a few times. Um, I thought for the new commissioner, it might be worth, because it's been, this was been on a slightly different track. Might be worth just charting the, the major milestones that we've gone through to get here uh to where we are today. Um, I'll just note again by introduction, Revision has been honored to work with a number of local communities, including Brentwood, um, Exeter, Kingston, um Chester uh through our selections. And so we have done at this point several dozen municipal projects in the state of New Hampshire, as well as in neighboring states. Um, and are particularly excited that if the project goes forward, as we believe it will, um, Rockingham County would be leading the state. This would be the, the first county to undertake a major project. It would be actually the largest project in the state um when completed. And we think that's um, uh, an exciting example to set for the, the rest of the state. We commend the county and commissioners on that. Um, just to quickly uh highlight some of the, the steps we've gone through. As I mentioned, starting in March, when the conceptual designs were um being created at the outset, um, we designed a series of carports with review design iterations, worked with Jonathan and some of the other early design contractors to do some load assessments on what we projected the consumption of the new building would be. Wanted to ensure that we could design to a hundred percent offset, which would be another significant milestone. Um, after that initial wave of designs, and there were some delays during the COVID lockdown and all the rest, um, we then pivoted in twenty twenty-one with um Jude's guidance from the county to assessing the Lad Farm site just down North Road here. Um, we did a, a number of site visits, commissioned um some wetland soil scientists to come out and assess the extent of wetlands based on the desktop survey there was on the national waters inventory, some areas of concern. Um, but on visual inspection, it appeared to be fairly extensive, the, the uplands in which we could build. Um, we also commenced utility uh interconnection study with EverSource to, to assess the local substation capacity and, and the capacity on the circuit here. It's a thirty-four, five kilovolt circuit, which is ideal for larger scale solar development. Um, during the course though, and, and presented some options to the commissioners at that time, during the course of that site assessment with soil scientists, it did appear that the extent of actual wetlands when mapped on the ground were were such that you would not be able to achieve the county's goal. The county had, had advised that they were looking to offset one hundred percent of total county electric demand. Um, simultaneously, we were working with the state on legislation that enabled public sector entities, municipalities, including counties to exceed what had been the one megawatt cap in project size, provided counties had the load to, to build a larger system. So we were doing ongoing analysis of county loads and determining that a solar array of roughly four point three megawatts was the size that would be required to generate one hundred percent of current electricity demand on an annual basis, as well as the projected additional demand from the new county building. Um, so based on the, the soil scientist work that we commissioned at Lad Farm, it was just not possible to design at that scale. And so we were directed back here to the main complex as um subsequent design work was being completed for the municipal building. Uh, we did some additional designs, as the commissioners may recall, for carport options. Um, carports are unfortunately always more expensive. You're, you're building the, the structure with far more extensive steel required as well as um below grade work. Um, and so the economics of a sizable carport in combination with a smaller ground mount out back just were not favorable. Um, and so we were directed to redesign exclusively using the most common design form, which is a fixed tilt ground mount array, like we did for the town of Brentwood, just, just down the road. As folks may see by the fire station. Um, and so with fortunately a substantial amount of acreage, um additional analysis of, of wetlands conditions, uh, there are some budding wetlands, but there was actually the, the ability to build at that scale to achieve that one hundred percent offset without any wetlands disturbance. Obviously, it's more complexity at the main building site. Um, and, and we, we respect the, the work that's been done to work through some significant hurdles there. Um, but we do have up-to-date soil surveys, which indicate that we're able to build at scale without any wetlands disturbance, uh, which is ideal. And that's the, the design that you see. We've gone through a, a few different iterations. This is just south, so it uh, butts the, the lower, the southern parking lot behind the municipal building. Um, it interconnects to the grid um on the, the western, northwestern portion. As you can see, I apologize, this is a, a smaller pronoun. So it's quite possible to read all. Um, happy to send you the full CAD and PDF files if that's helpful. Um, but this is our, our most up-to-date, uh, yeah, Commissioner, did you have a question?
Yes, I, I'm, I'm just trying to, as you're just talking about the, describing it, I'm trying to understand where, I don't know where this, the map is. I, I, I don't have good perspective. Like, where are we? I need a you are here thing.
We are almost at the road, so we would be sitting right here on the map. North Road runs just north of the cutoff.
You're not seeing it. So North Road is way up here. This is the back site of the new municipal building will be right here. That's the dirt road that runs down the field on the other side. Um, this is, if you're looking.
So who's gonna see all this array? Nobody.
Unless you're taking a walk out back, it won't be visible to the public. It'll be down and, and a little bit behind. You, you might, um, so obviously panels facing south, so you won't have any of the reflection off the glass unless you're walking way back into the field. Um, so nothing uh apparent from the road. Um, but for folks taking a walk, you'll see a, a field of solar panels. Uh, just a quick side note on the environmental considerations with the, the endangered species out in the field. Uh, that's something that, you know, we consider ourselves an, an environmentally focused company in terms of our business. Um, and we've seen some, some good progress made as a standard operating procedure today. We re-seed uh all fields where we install solar with a, a native seed mix that's a pollinator habitat. So it's, it's um, ideal for, for local pollinators. We also encourage the counties, will be owned by the county, so it'll be obviously your discretion as to what form of vegetation management you choose. Um, don't need to do any more than twice annual brush hogging to ensure that um, grass and trubs don't grow above the thirty-six inches, which is the drip edge, the leading edge of the solar panels. But actually, we're working with increasingly local farms to do sheep grazing um, within the solar array area. Uh, it will be fenced off, so no additional infrastructure required. And there's some, some terrific farms that will um move their sheep around between different solar farms, um, very compatible with the solar array. Rather not goats, they'll climb and they'll nibble, nibble the wires, but, but sheep are ideal. So there's some uh, as we work with um New Hampshire DES, with Fish and Wildlife, Fish and Game, Army Corps of Engineers, um, we're, we're able to um implement some, some ideal practices that keep, from an environmental standpoint, the ecosystem um, in, in the most sustainable condition. Um, then the final notes, just, just to mention, um, in addition to the, the multiple design iterations that we did in preparation for contract last um September, I think it was when we were, uh, went under contract. We've been working further with EverSource, the utility. Um, we've gone through the pre-application process. Um, as we had discovered with Lad Farm, there is substation capacity, which is ideal. Although that capacity um is subject to, to being um spoken for as other projects apply for and reserve capacity. Um, so we have been meeting regularly with EverSource. We have gone through the, the full interconnection process, are now awaiting system impact study agreement. They conduct a three to four, sometimes it pushes to five month, very detailed study. Um, at the conclusion of which, the county will be able to enter um the interconnection service agreement, which is the official lock on substation capacity. Um, still at a point in New Hampshire where uh almost every substation, and according to the latest data locally, uh, there is capacity, but that, that is starting to change. So that is uh one reason why we urge um to, to not delay in terms of completing the full study with EverSource, which we should be able to commence in a matter of weeks. Um, and then we've also begun procurement planning. We haven't placed the major orders yet. We'd like to go through the, the EverSource system impact study as well as the AOT process, working with Jonathan and Novus Engineering on uh, the engineering designs as part of that submission that went in the first week of January. But over the next uh handful of months, we will have the EverSource study, we'll have the DES um comments end of February on the alteration of terrain. And then we expect within a few months of that, final issuance of the AOT permit. Those are the two major benchmarks that we want to ensure we cross before we uh spend meaningful money out of the county's roughly ten million dollar budget to make all of the equipment purchases. Uh, we are tracking supply chains very closely, as are, of course, Harvey. Um, we're in a, a better pricing environment, significantly better than last year. Lead times have come down, pricing is coming down slightly. Um, and equipment, uh, the efficiency of the solar panels has increased very significantly since our initial designs. I think back when we were doing designs in twenty twenty, we were looking at panels with a standard efficiency of three hundred and seventy-five watts. We're now specing five hundred and eighty watt panels, which means we need less acreage. These are also bi-facial panels, so they have an additional gain um of, of reflected sunlight off the field of between four and six percent. Um, so all in all, we feel very good about the progress. Um, obviously very, very honored to be working with our local county. It will be a landmark project for the state. And um, we think we're on track over the next several months to complete the utility, as well as the state permitting process. And then place all the procurement orders. Um, and depending on the exact timelines with EverSource and DES, it may be possible to commence pile driving, the, the racking system installation uh late this year. Uh, but we do wanna set conservative expectations. Um, and so at, at the latest, we would be looking at ground thaw next spring, um, early spring, late winter next year, depending on weather conditions. Um, and then the actual installation of the solar panels is uh uh, for a, for a this size, four to six months. Um, so not nearly as long in terms of the compared to the building project. And then there's a few additional months of final testing, commissioning, utility work, et cetera. But we fully expect to be complete on the solar side in the course of twenty twenty-four. And at that point, when EverSource issues permission to operate, after full commissioning, the county will then be generating over five million kilowatt hours of electricity um sold to EverSource, offsetting via on bill credits, the several county electric accounts. Well, that was too much information.
The labor side of things, Dan? Are you okay with that? I mean?
That's looking good as well. Um, so a portion of the labor will be conducted by Revisions employee owners, um, just down the road in Brentwood. Um, we will be responsible with Harvey. I neglected to mention, part of the reason why uh, from our perspective, having gone through a lot of the public sector procurements, the reason why we think there's a, a strong public interest in structuring it the way we did, working under Harvey's general management. Um, we've actually been fortunate to work with Harvey on probably at least a dozen projects at this point with, with them as, as the project manager and general contractor. There's a number of activities on the permitting side and on the site preparation side that would be duplicative if we were doing them via a separate contract with the, the county. Um, permitting, the marginal cost of extending the acreage in a single AOT permit pack to DES is far less than undertaking a separate AOT application. Um, that reaches into the six figures today with all of the environmental and civil engineering work that goes in. Um, so that was one area of meaningful efficiencies. And then some of the site prep work in terms of the access road, pads, et cetera, uh, will also be significantly less expensive by virtue of working under Harvey. Um, so we think that was a wise way of structuring it, and, and it will allow us to proceed a little more efficiently.
And uh, and with respect to that efficiency, again, this is sort of granular, but will you trench the lines when you're doing the site work? Like, for instance, I know you're not installing till way to, to next, next year, year right now, right? But if we're starting the site work, will you, are you gonna like, do you do that part in terms of getting the power to the actual building? Does that happen in conjunction with the site work?
Yes, so that will portion the, there's a very detailed site scope and we're happy to go through it in, in more detail. The initial work is simply um some, some upgrades to the access road in the area where all the medium voltage gear that steps the power up from four hundred and eighty volts to, to the thirty-four, five kilovolts of the distribution circuit. Um, so that will all be early in the process. And then the trenching within the array, each row is connected. You won't have any wires above ground, obviously, that's important. Um, that will all be part of the primary construction activities in the area.
Jude, did you have something to add?
Um, I, I did. It's probably escaped me at this point. Um, I wanted to point out that Fish and Game is actively engaged in, what are you planting underneath them? How high is your fence gonna be? What kind of fence is it? Every piece of this, it like affects each other. And I must say, listening to these folks, you can see how closely the collaboration has been. It just makes me really excited again to be on this project. Sometimes it's just seems like work, but sometimes it's just like the coolest project. I'm really excited about it. I think it's wonderful for the county and I, I, I'm grateful that you brought everyone in for the presentation.
Before you go, I just, in terms of collaboration, I'm just gonna thank um Rob, again, is, is great about um correcting me when I'm wrong. I'm wrong. Completion is April of twenty-five, not twenty-six.
I thought I saw him sweating a little bit.
Don't go away, don't go away. I have a question. So I made it abundantly clear with the commissioners that I believe that we should be hiring an OPM to oversee all of the aspects of this project. Uh, so I, I would like to know how hiring an OPM uh affects you, your progress, your business, and what your experience uh, with that has been in the past. And I'd just like to know your thoughts in general about introducing an OPM into this project.
So I'll give you my opinion. Um, I'm sure Rob may wanna step up and, and do the same. Um, I am, I'm an advocate for an OPM. I, I just wanna preface this upfront, um, in a timeframe when it's appropriate. An OPM, um, uh, basically a project management and an owner's project manager. Um, what's important around hiring an OPM is, is defining what the goals are that you want out of that person. In, so in terms of, of OPMs, I mean, it's a little different in Massachusetts than it is in New Hampshire. New Hampshire does not mandate an owner's rep or even a clerk on public works, on school projects, on that. It's not, it's not a requirement. Um, and so i- in a big picture, the value of the OPM, um, in my opinion, is when you bring that person on and he's part of the conversation from the very beginning. Because really what he brings to the table is the conversation around value, around decisions of that uh, project scope and scheduling and all of those things. I think, you know, in short, I mean, I, I can get into it in more, the difficulty right now with hiring an OPM, and I think is that we're already through the design phase. We've been working on the design for fourteen months. Um, this project is not a public bid like it might be in Massachusetts. We decided a long time ago that we're gonna do the model of construction management. Construction management is that we've already hired the general contractor. He's already on board. He is going to bid all of the trades, but the, but the contractor is chosen. So in this model of construction management, Harvey being part of the design from concept fourteen months ago, sixteen months ago, um, we chose to go down the route of having a commissioning agent involved with. So we've had a commissioning agent that has scrutinized the design along the way at each of the phases. Um, we've done packages at schematic and design development, at seventy percent design development, at eighty percent construction documents. And that commissioning agent. And that commissioning agent has reviewed all of the engineering, offered comments around efficiency, and did you look at this? Did you do that? No, this is wired backwards, that kind of thing. And we've had Harvey at the table advising and doing an estimate based on. So we've had an estimate at each one where they've come back and said it's sixty-two, it's sixty-four, it's sixty-six, it's sixty-two, it's sixty-four. So as we make those decisions along the way, and we've had many vexes and force, and Rob and his staff, you know, the relationship is such that they're not, they're gonna speak up, and they have. And said, no, we want to look at this, and there's other ways of doing it. So the value of the OPM, had they been involved, would have been, quite frankly, working with the CM and working with the commissioning agent. Those three might have been a little bit of, you know, sort of overstaffed, but it's the process that we, that we chose. So I think everything in terms of value that the OPM would have brought in that fourteen months of time is has been accomplished with Harvey and with the commissioning agent in that process. Where we are today, I believe that the OPM sort of converts to a clerk, clerk of the works. So I've had this conversation with several OPMs over time that, you know, at this particular point, really what back up on schedule, but at this point, a clerk is gonna just confirm on a daily basis or weekly basis that the building is getting built, per the plans, expects, the design intent is being met. So the, in my opinion, the job description for that OPM shifts from when we're doing the design and the value that he brings to the conversation during the design phase to somebody that's really looking at mandating the schedule and the the budget and those kinds of things as we build the building out. Now, I just want to talk about schedule. So the process that we've gone through is we've done the design, we've had the criticism. We've had Harvey come to the table and say, you know, this is the cost, and with Jude's help, we said, no, we're gonna pull that back, we're gonna shift, we're gonna make some decisions. We worked through the issue of subsoil and how do we resolve that? Where Harvey has reached out to the subconsultants and said, look, we need to reduce the weight of the soil. How do we go about that in a collaborative way? So we've got all the engineering team working with the subs, if you will, to come up with that answer. So that collaboration has been happening along the way. The issue here is we're at the end of the design phase. We're putting this drawing, this set of drawings out in a couple of weeks to the market. And it's important that we get to the market in March. I've had several other OPMs talk to us about if this gets delayed three, four, five, six months, it's a totally different market, and you could be looking at a five or ten percent increase in costs. So if we were to that, that value that the OPM brings at this particular point, the only way to experience that value would be to scrutinize the design, pull the drawings apart, and redesign it. And that, that is a six to eight month delay. I'm gonna say upfront, we're already six months behind the eight ball because of all of the site issues that we've had across the street. I don't want to see a delay. So there's, if we're gonna redesign to find value, there's additional engineering costs, because none of my engineers in the team have anticipated, you know, going through another round of design. We've been doing that for fourteen months. And the fact that you might be able to save some money is gonna be offset by going out to bid six months later and it being a totally different construction market viewed by the subs at that particular time. So you might save some money, but you're gonna, there's additional costs that are gonna occur with a later bidding. So in my opinion, and I don't mean this to mean anything other than what it is, that the value of having the OPM involved in the process, that ship has sailed, in my opinion. Should you decide that you want a clerk, that's a totally different situation. But I will, I just want to say, I've been working with Jude and her staff for more than fifteen years. Smartest woman I know with regards to this campus and the buildings and all the rest of it. She is more than capable and has the staff that is engaged in the process, different than other counties and other. I've got Ryan and his staff that, that is part of the weekly construction meeting. They know where the pump is going in the building. They know, it's not like they disappear for two years and come back and go, how do we run this? They're, they're engaged in the construction process, so they know where everything is hidden in the ceiling, how the systems work. I don't have to, I'm not bringing the tradespeople and the engineers together two, two years from now. When, when the system goes online, Ryan already knows how things, how things are being plumbed, how the, the air systems work. It's a very different situation. So that's, I don't know, Rob, if you want to add something, but that's my opinion. No, I think, I think first of all, I'm sorts of win in this. We're probably clear. But I think we have gotten to the point where it's a clerk of the works we're talking about. And most OPMs have that function within their organization. But we were planning on breaking ground May first, so, so we're we've done a lot of that upfront stuff, and my vision, our vision right now is getting in the ground and getting, getting things started. Whether you go with, with some sort of representative is totally up to you. But I do think that you are getting into more of the bricks and the mortar side of things versus the planning side of things, if I can make that difference.
So you have the sounds.
Maybe just one last final note, if I may. We certainly agree, having gone through, as I tried to briefly articulate, about three years of different solar design iterations with a level of county staff involved, like that we rarely see. We appreciate very much how, how capable the staff is here in Rockingham. The final note, I alluded to this in terms of the timeline. They've articulated some of the concerns in terms of going to bid in the trades in the next two months. On the solar side, we do have, I spent a little more time than I wish in Concord, and there's a number of pieces of legislation which would expand New Hampshire's net metering program, which has bipartisan support, which if passed, will have a significant, probably transformational effect on demand for larger scale solar projects in New Hampshire, including here in Rockingham County. That could have the effect if this project has not reserved substation capacity by completing the system impact study over the next few months, of simply removing that capacity in the first place, which could make a project entirely infeasible or significantly more expensive. Substation upgrades move from six figures to seven figures is what we've seen made a few years ahead of us, and that's been a clear trend. So we would be quite concerned on the county's behalf, and obviously my company is, is very eager to build this project for the county, that if we lose a few months, based on progress, we're seeing progress, if you will, in terms of state legislation around net metering, that the project could face some very significant hurdles.
Dan, is that current, those current bills in front of Concord now?
Yes, they're going through hearings right now. There's a couple in the Senate, a couple in the House. Senator Abarth is the lead sponsor of one. Senator Lang, new state senator of another, that would significantly expand who can participate in that one to five megawatt market.
So those bills are in the Senate right now?
That's right.
Okay, so we still have time, because obviously it has to hash out on the Sun side, has to hash out on the House side, committees, whatnot. If you're looking at June, July, before they make any decisions on new, new law, potential law. That gives us, that gives us the time.
We do have some time, so it's That's right. At this point, I, I don't think the project is in any jeopardy. I think passage would occur in May or June, signing within a few weeks of that. So I think we're looking at, you know, early midsummer is when we could. What will be interesting, because there's obviously a certain amount of speculation, we saw this in Maine a few years ago when they passed some major overhauls of their net metering program, is as the legislation was moving through the process and appearing likely to pass. And actually, in the past, New Hampshire's had net metering bills which made it through the House and Senate, but were then vetoed. But in anticipation of the possibility, that the greater likelihood, we did see a lot of, God bless them, national solar developers come in and start reserving, submitting those interconnection applications to reserve space.
We want commitment in place.
Yeah, and the only reason I'm going there is on a, on a much smaller scale, the town of Derry did a, and if I get the terminology, is it PP?
EPA project.
EPA project, which where it's a little bit different, where, you know, the infrastructure's paid for. We get the reduced, we don't own the equipment. But we're having, the town of Derry is running into a little bit of a snag with, with eversource. It's like they're delayed, delayed, delayed. And so there's a problem on that side of things, and it's like, hurry up so we can get the six cents a kilowatt hour, you know?
Yeah, we, we meet regularly with the eversource team, including eversource's chief president, they're fully in. Our putting pressure, there have been delays, there's been some frustration.
Yeah.
But we are, at this point, ahead of other projects in the process. Nobody can, can skip the process we're going through.
Okay, so we're in a queue, we're in a queue.
So any new project applying today has, goes through the pre-app, which we did a few months ago. Goes to the standard application, which we also did a few months ago, and then commences the system impact study. So we're a few months ahead of any project that would be commencing now. What we don't want to do is, is not continue the process, because that's where we could lose that space.
Thank you.
Okay, so is it fair to describe your biggest objection right now for an OPM is the schedule? That would, if, if it affected your schedule significantly, that would affect this project. Is that, is that your, your only or biggest objection?
That's my biggest objection.
Okay, so that leaves to, to on the table, clerk of the works. Now, I don't know that that's the right term, but how do I know that your design was right? I assume there's gonna be percentage of errors that will have to be. How do I know that, who's managing you guys? You're gonna come to me for my signature, looking to sign off on sixty-six billion dollars. And today I learned a new acronym, AOT. And I, I, I'm simply not qualified to make a good decision about a construction project of this scale. So who do we depend on to be sure that you're doing your job right? And that delays or changes the cost, the county money or time, we understand clearly who is to, who is responsible for mitigating or, you know, addressing those issues?
So the, the process that's in place right now is that Warren Street Architects is, is doing the construction administration of the project, directly contracted to the owner, which is the county. I will tell you that like a three-legged stool, I answer to Jude. Rob answered, Harvey answered to Jude. Issues come up, they always will be issues along the way, and the three of us hold each other accountable. Will there be, you know, mistakes, or will there be issues that come up along the way? Absolutely, but the, but the process in place is that, I believe the teams are vetted. There are relationships here that Harvey has no problem telling me I'm wrong. And I have no problem telling Harvey that they're wrong. And Jude sits at the table and is party to every one of these conversations. And we talk about how to resolve issues as we go along. The schedule is reviewed on a regular basis. The progress is reviewed on a regular basis. We've demonstrated that we can do that. We've done that here for fifteen years. This is, this project, the size of this project is not out of the realm of what we deal with on a regular basis. And all I can say is, you know, based on reputation and, and experience and the process that we have, we're, we're engaged right now with the county of Sullivan, Sullivan County. We've been working with them for probably five years. And
Do they have an OPM?
They do not. Do they have a clerk? They do not.
Nope, that's good.
And so I personally don't believe that, that, that at this particular point, with the level of the staff that you have at the county right here, you don't need a clerk. You have Jude and her staff. Again, I'm gonna say it, she's, she knows systems. You know, when we talk about the well, and we talk about, she corrects us all the time. She corrects me all the time. And there's a relationship where I don't take it offensively, or she doesn't hurt my feelings. But if I say something that's out of line, it's, the, the relationship is what it is. She holds me accountable. And I hold Harvey accountable, and we work like a three-legged stool. And that is typically how work occurs in New Hampshire. And I feel very comfortable with it, and I'll let Jude speak to it, but she knows, I, the best interest of the county, that's my number one concern.
And I bring everything to the board.
Jude is our clerk, if you will.
I bring everything to the board, ongoing reports, and issues always come to the board every week.
See, the, the hard part of, I'm sorry, but just, the hard part about bringing somebody in that is a clerk, you know, is they're walking into a campus that they don't know. So all of a sudden, Jude's got to explain, you know, the service is here, the well is over there. So it becomes another conversation where somebody's trying to learn what we've all talked about for the last, you know, four years. So I don't see where that necessarily brings another layer of accountability when Jude is not gonna let us spend any money recklessly, and, and she's very aware of all the, the systems that we're dealing with. I mean, we're still, we got issues with the water, bringing water, you got a new water main project that's coming along, which affects the municipal building. We have a new pump station that has to be built with regards to that. And I'm gonna be honest, Jude knows more about these systems than I do. You know, when, when she's talking to the engineers, they start talking about stuff. I just kind of back up and go, you know, I'm gonna let the experts here work it out, because it's, and she holds them accountable. So, I mean, you can spend hundreds of thousands of dollars and bring somebody in, but all we're doing is dragging them along and teaching them what's happening here, you know, in the process. That's humbly, in my opinion.
Okay, well, any more discussion?
Thank you very much for those candid responses.
If I could add just one small thing from the solar side, we are contractually obligated to deliver this project to you within the timeframe discussed. We do build into our budget, as Harvey does, modest contingencies. So that when curveballs come, we're not asking you for more money. We are covering that out of our budget. That's something that my company's taken pride in doing for over fifteen thousand projects at this stage over the last twenty years. And we have every expectation of doing the same here. So in terms of what's defined in the scope of work of that contract, which is standard form for all of our municipal, as well as commercial contracts, we do believe the county is well protected.
So to that point, contingencies both in their contract and with Harvey, is not Harvey's money. There's, you know, if they don't spend that contingency, correct me if I'm wrong, well, you're giving it back to the county. So as we go along and hit a hiccup, you know, if, if the numbers, you know, on the construction manager's side are bad, they have a pool, their construction contingency to dive into, that's, it's there. The owner has a contingency for other things that come up. We have, we're doing the furniture fixture equipment, we're doing the artwork on the inside of the building, we're doing all of those things. Those things haven't been bid yet. That package is in, in, in place and in the works. But again, we're, we're sitting down and we're talking about it, and, you know, Harvey may come and say glass, recycled glass fill has gone up, you know, thirty-six cents a pound, or whatever it might be. Well, how, how do we accomplish, how do we do it without the increase? That conversation will happen within that three-legged stool. So, you know, Jude's not just gonna say, oh, just bend it, whatever. We talk about it.
I just want to say, as somebody who has been a part of county here on the delegation side for many, many years, and the discussion, which was a dream, at that point, was literally a dream, to do a new building, up to the present day. I'm really excited to see this going. I mean, that's one of my favorite things as a planning board member in my town, is to see stuff on paper. And the process has been long, but, you know, we, we're finally here, and I'm really excited about that. So, you know, I've been following right along all, all those years on the building, and glad that we're, we're coming to the, to the, the point where it's gonna be a reality now, and I'm really excited about that. I'm especially excited about the solar. Only because it, it, it was different, as you mentioned, we had the recovered parking specifically solar to, for the new building. And then all of a sudden, we get Opera money, and then we're able to do what we're doing. And not only that, keeping this money in the local government, I mean, the local area, New Hampshire vendors and companies, which will go and spread out into the communities, you know, create jobs, I'm more than excited about that. And then this project will be something that we can all be proud of. something that we can all be proud of. Uh it will be a showcase. Uh like you had mentioned, this will be the largest solar array. Um and the the pictures of the building have been outstanding, so I I can't wait for it.
Jude, do you wanna speak to what the solar will save the county?
I believe for the life, I know it increased though, but the initial estimate was like twenty million dollars for the life of the panels. I think that's only gone up now.
It has to have.
And then you also have the renewable energy credits generated on an annual basis. So I'd be driven by market pricing of of uh of REX. And so that's probably what hundred, hundred fifty thousand a year anyways.
That's right.
For our our volume that we're generating, so.
When we talked about what was gonna cover the the county complex of of that price of six or seven hundred thousand. That was before the rates went up, correct?
Yes.
Because the metering credits are pegged to current default supply rates, if we reran the cash flow, which we'd be happy to do. You would see a significantly higher return. We don't wanna promise that because rates do fluctuate. Um so we think the latest are good conservative numbers to hang your hat on, but based on recent trends, it will save substantial amount.
Can you can you run a a new uh a new calculation as it has an estimate? That's fine. Just what the current savings would be for.
But then I think we throw in the the energy credits and that positively. Overall, we might have to record things accounting wise, the gross level that we saw at the budget for the expense, but then you have the offsetting revenues coming in from from the uh, you know, the the megawatts back to the grid plus the energy credits, so.
Very good. Any any further discussion? We we thank you very much for updating.
You wanna take five minutes and flip through the set? I can share where, you know.
Are you leaving those or or is that?
I was not, but I can.
Um is it okay if you leave those and we can see them after and then Jude can we can link with Jude's? Is that all right, Jude?
Yes, of course, I'll collect it.
Is that is that possible?
Somebody's gonna carry them for it.
We can do that. We can do that. Gentlemen, thank you very much for updating us uh on on the on what's going on here and and getting our new commissioner up to speed as to Thank you. All right. So we uh I'm gonna, one of the people on Zoom has have left. So I'm gonna just go around the room real quick to be the last heads. Uh Robin, do you have anything you wanna share?
Jason's up there waving.
Oh, okay. Is there any new other new business?
I did wanna bring something up, which is uh we have all this opioid abatement money and I think it would be the cool bus because we don't, there's all this much and it's gonna be continuing to come in for eighteen years. I think it's important. And constantly change, we're we're it look at there's more settlements, more money coming in. And we have our fifteen percent, but there's also an opportunity to tap to tap into that eighty, you know, the balance, that eighty-five percent from the state. I think we need to put into effect some sort of system, you know, where right now there's been a couple of things coming forward and I think it would be really important for us to get either a subcommittee together to try to put into affect criteria um so that we can have a system in place for evaluating um projects. Maybe we we can get work collaboratively with department heads on some of the ideas they have for projects so that we're targeted in how we're gonna use the money and set uh sort of a legacy of a systems in place because we have eighteen years of collecting and utilizing this money so that we have like infrastructure in place for utilization of it. So I would, you know, I and I'm just thinking about this going forward, I would propose that we have, we set up a subcommittee, bring the department heads. And um you know, one of
So can we can we agenda this for another meeting? Because to be all honest with you, we were on new business. I moved on after I asked if there was any new business. There wasn't. That's why we went to the presentation. So is it okay to?
Can't we just continue?
Do you wanna follow an agenda or don't you? I mean, it's up to you guys. I mean, wanna just be all over the place, fine, but.
I use, we haven't concluded new business.
We did conclude new business as we went, we went to the presentation after that. A good commissioner here actually made a motion to move it and we did and we discussed the podcast. And then after I had asked if there was any other new business, there wasn't, and we moved on to the presentation. So I don't have a problem doing what you wanna do, but can we do it for another meeting? Is that okay? I mean, we can agenda it for the next meeting. We meet weekly. I don't think it's such urgent that we have to do anything right now.
I I'm perfectly happy to entertain the discussion.
A discussion on?
I think Commissioner Coyle was still trying to describe what she has in mind that we should be doing moving forward. I just at least finish your thought, you know, and, you know, before we move on, it's a legitimate discussion.
Okay, like I said, if you guys wanna just do hodgepodge on the agenda and do whatever you want, then fine.
What, just to, there are two issues. There's this what this new business and the procedure. With respect to the procedure, you didn't say, oh, we concluded with new business. We stopped.
You guys keep going. Take over the meeting, you have the vice chair.
Uh we're recessed. So my perception of what occurred is that we were in new business. We discussed a couple of items. And then the schedule, we had a scheduled presentation at nine thirty. It was about nine thirty eight and we went right into that presentation because it was lengthy. We have guests here that were here to present. Uh I don't think that we really concluded new business. Um at that point, we just moved on because of the schedule and uh I think it's perfectly appropriate to uh continue on that. You know, I don't wanna spend any too much extra time, but I, to me, it's appropriate to be continuing with the new business.
And certainly my objective in bringing it up was just a primer to start the conversation because as we discussed, it's nice to have a little discussion. Then for next week, you know, people can, you can have each we are liaisons to various department types. It'd be an opportunity to talk to your department heads. See if there's interest for this and then come back to the table with more information. So the reason I brought this up in new business is because I thought it would be an opportunity to get the ball going about a discussion and about how we as commissioners want to deal with this. Now, I I am of the belief that I think having a subcommittee and then putting together implementing some sort of structure and sort of organization and like setting guidelines. And I don't have it on my head at all. It's like gonna be collaborative, but that having those things in place would be very beneficial um for the county as well as for us commissioners as we have accountability to everybody else. Hey, why did you approve this or didn't approve that? You know, as we go forward. So all I would, the goal for this new business, and I don't need to belabor it anymore, is to just prime my fellow commissioners so that we can start doing some research in the backend over the next week, come back to the table, put it on the agenda. Mister Chairman, as you suggested, if you're willing next week, then we can um have a further conversation.
So the subcommittee that you are proposing that we discuss is about opioid abatement money funds that we have more of than we had anticipated and how that's going to be spent moving forward. Do I just wanna understand?
Absolutely. So there and then there's the money, there's two things. There's two components to it. There's the fifteen percent that we, Rockingham County takes. And then there's an eighty-five percent amount or so. Is that correct? Correct me if I'm wrong. That's from this that had, we have access to that we can apply to to the state. And Superintendent Henry is on the opioid abatement committee on the state level. Um and they're establishing rules and procedures and applications for some of those other um so that we could apply to. One thing I thought was, do you want, do you wanna inter?
First one, do you, are you familiar with opioid abatement money yet?
I've heard the term.
So so you have a base for it. So the this basically state sued and then there was there's also twenty-three sub recipients and
Oh, Johnson, yeah, the Walgreens and C V S or something, right?
Chuck looks like, if I'm wrong, there's twenty-three sub recipients who sued separately and then then decided to jump on with the state. Now, when that happened, what hap- what happened was there was an agreement made with Attorney General's Office in multiple different parts of the country and then also in state in New Hampshire. Um I'm not saying everybody agreed to the agreement, but what happens, the sub recipients, anyone that comes into the state from those tho- those settlements, this twenty-three sub recipients gets fifteen percent off top based upon um population, population in Rocky Island's big population. And then the eighty-five percent of that, it goes back to the state under the opioid abatement committee, which I sit on, which then from there you can apply for grants and that committee sits there and decides who gets the grants. And there's a, there's fourteen criterias that were laid out, put through legislative offices of what you can apply for. Um which anybody can apply for. So we can apply for uh the eighty-five percent. But what we're getting is that fifteen percent off the top for the county to use at their discretion on how they want to use that money. We're sitting on one point four million dollars.
Yes, and there's some pending amounts to come in. That'll be a matter.
So the subcommittee is gonna review how that money is spent, that's what you.
And come back to the commission, to the, I mean, commissioners and say, yeah, I mean, my thought is get, let's get buy-in from the department heads who might wanna be using this money, you know, or, you know, the county attorney's office. I could anticipate, you know, they might have some, you know, for programming someone or someone designated or a speci- specific role within the county attorney's office.
Not all, no, the fourteen criterias, uh department heads, or even the commissioner to some extent. Um like Chuck and I have been a little more intimate with it. Um because this one is coming in for next eighteen years. So and I mean, those criterias might change legislatively or they may not, but right now they're set in there with what you can use it for. Um so all of us getting more education around it might have ideas of how to use it.
And it doesn't necessarily have to be, I said something, it could be a working group, whatever. My thought is get a group, get everybody together like this, set a roundtable. So we can try to establish some of those things and come back to, and maybe all the commissioners are a part of it, or maybe just one commissioner and we um come back and report to all three commissioners and then we'll vote on the rules or like pro- procedures, applications, whatever. So it was just group of thought.
Um, okay, I'm I'm good with that. I think we should continue that discussion. Uh I I'd just like to also point out, uh as far as new business, we only got through a small portion of uh August uh presentation. And I don't wanna do more of it today. But I would like to continue that at our next meeting, if that's possible, to finish with all of the details that you presented. It's such an important part of what's going on. I I just, we had another big presentation today.
No worries. Yeah, we can continue.
And maybe we can add it under the commissioners. Uh but uh you know, if we could, in terms of, we have reports, but maybe we can put them.
I have no further new business.
So there's no 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 more new business? Well, uh we'll move on to public comment. I don't know if there's anything in the public.
Mister Chairman?
Yes.
Don't we have to do, uh are we doing that? Aren't we doing department head updates?
Yes, I apologize. Moving back. Yes, I, thank you. I'm gonna go to Robin because I started with Robin last time. Do you have anything, Robin?
I do, thank you. Um I wanted to just report that we have started some of our more formal well, uh cybersecurity training. You've all probably seen the email that came out, went out to all users um on Tuesday. We started a ninety-day campaign for this particular subject, which happens to be password security. Uh they're brief, they're uh just, you know, pointed um subjects to try to just create some more awareness and keep our our network safe. Uh this will be last ninety days. The users have ninety days to to complete the training, which is, I think it's about twenty-two minutes over the three three different sections. Um and we will start another one in May. Um and you know, the next one will be another subject and we're just gonna go forward with that. We use a product called Know Before, something that's used, you know, in a lot of municipalities. And I think that we're gonna see some positive results from it. I think at at a minimum, it's gonna just continue to create the awareness for for the folks that we have.
And you want and you want us to participate, commissioners?
I I would love it. I sent them to you. Great. Please don't make me send that email to say, do your training, please. Um uh and another thing that happened this week is I was invited to go to Primex to meet with other I T professionals across the state municipalities. Uh Brenda, Poji from the Sheriff's Department and I went. Uh we made some good connections. It'll be a quarterly meeting that will, you know, we've been invited to come back to. Um the the benefit of that is, you know, we're kinda giving the tidbits of grant money that's coming down along the pipe to the state. Uh which will provide us with some some money to be able to use for things like U B keys. So right now with the two-factor authentication, you know, we have some folks that use their cell phones to get a code. We have some folks that can't use their cell phones, like the Department of Corrections. They can't take their phones with them. So we've got to overcome some hurdles as how to how to authenticate them in some of these systems. And as we bring new systems in or just upgrade things, it's gonna be more and more of 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 a factor for us. So uh the grant money that's out there is going to provide us with those keys at no cost, which is what we thought we were gonna get uh discounted cost. So it it was definitely just for that reason alone. It was beneficial to go to that meeting, so. And that's it.
Wow, Robin, I think that's the most a long time. That's great. Bottom. Since you're here, I'm gonna you wanna say something?
Sure. Uh recruitment is always um crazy busy. I am always, you know, trying to come up with new and exciting ways to reach our audience. Um as of currently, our long-term care admin team, besides a per D M receptionist that we're trying to hire just to fill gaps and holes in their schedule that they might have with vacations and callouts, uh long-term care admin is officially fully staffed. Uh which is very, very exciting as we've had lots of um vital positions that have been open this year to include the fiscal services manager, activities coordinator, um executive assistant, admissions assistant, just to name some. Um so I've been very pleased to focus um a lot more of my efforts on corrections. Um nursing uh as well as assisted living in the recent couple of months. Um so I'm just kind of making sure that I continue, you know, recruiting in those various areas for them.
Good. Can you just add Jude's got a few spots that are like really critical?
Oh, yes, my apologies. And and Jude, um she she is um definitely a big priority for me as well in her positions that she has. Uh very difficult to fill tradesmen uh trades positions, which is um manpower survey that they did, and I believe it was twenty twenty-one named um the trades uh the high, the hardest positions to fill for their previous four or five years. Um so we are, I'm kind of trying to take a different approach with the maintenance positions as I'm realizing that Indeed isn't necessarily working. And perhaps that's because we don't have enough job seekers on Indeed that are in the maintenance field. Um actively looking for positions on there. So although all of her positions are still sponsored on Indeed, just to in case, you know, somebody searches for maintenance on there. Um I have taken a more grassroots approach um to try to connect. Uh well, you know, doing the referral bonus is a big one. If anybody on her team or anybody that works here, you know, knows somebody. Um but also making sure that we keep connections with the mechanical um trade schools in the area.
Also, just a suggestion, maybe we reach out to some of the unions for like the copper union or plumber union or electric union. See if they have someone that's just recently graduated that may be interested. That's just a thought.
No, that's a great idea. I'll I'll look into it for sure.
Great, thank you. Allison, oh, I'm sorry.
I referred Lou Garozzo from S N I Companies to you. Allison, I specifically asked him to contact you, but probably it should have gone to August. But I just don't have your contact information yet, so you can update me. He is, they they're a recruitment company.
Out of North Andover.
Yes.
I did have a conversation. It was a woman that called me, moving on. And I did have a conversation with her.
I've always had email conversations. I didn't, I didn't know that. Thank you.
And I did engage in a conversation. They are um kind of like an agency, contract agency like we have with um and all of those.
Yep.
Um I didn't wanna bring it to the board. I was gonna put it on the agenda because like all the other agencies that we work, we do not do hire. We do not do permit uh part uh agency direct hire because of the percentage of what it costs. So there's a, you know, so if I'm making, you know, if my annual salary is gonna be, you know, seventy thousand dollars and we have them do the recruitment for that, they start on and then we wanna bring them on, we have to buy out the contract. And it's usually around fifteen to twenty percent of the annual salary that you have to pay.
Oh, fifteen to twenty percent?
Typical is pretty much the typical, yeah.
So they they do involve themselves in direct hiring.
They will, we would contract with them and say, hey, we have, you know, um, you know, an H R director position. Haven't had much luck on that. They will go out and do some their contacts. They keep a pool of contacts, then go out and search. They may bring somebody in. We'll usually maybe bring them in temporarily, kinda see how they work out and then, you know, Chuck says to me, you know what? I really wanna come to the board. I really wanna hire that H R director.
Like Tim steps.
And so, okay, well, what are the terms and conditions? And it's it's off, based off the annual salary, the percentage is based off. So we don't typically, the the flavor of the previous boards have been they don't want to do that. Um yeah, we don't budget for that and that's a an expense over and above the salary.
But we're budgeting for sign-on bonuses, so we're already, you know, like for a nurse, for instance, we're willing to give a ten thousand dollar bonus. But we're budgeting for sign-on bonuses. So we're already, you know, like for a nurse, for instance, we're willing to give a ten thousand dollar bonus. For someone to sign on, on, as a nurse. So now let's say we get rid of that ten thousand dollar bonus. And we go to an agency and pay them ten thousand dollars to find us a nurse that works out, you know, maybe they get paid. After the nurse has been with us for a period of time, kinda like the bonuses would get. Get, is, I mean, is there some negotiation there that we can consider?
We did use a nursing firm for our F two skilled care nursing. That was the one that the board actually approved. And it was a fabulous failure on all, all ways around it. Um, it just did not work out. The candidate we interviewed, the candidate pool, this person agreed to the terms and conditions. It did not work out. Luckily, it was within a period of time, but, um. What I would say for nursing, it's not gonna work, I, I would say it, it's not gonna be as positive for nursing because if we do a sign-on bonus, they're only getting those increments along the way for a year. If we bring someone in through an agency and we pay, we have to pay that fee upfront.
When, when do you pay the fee? As soon as you hire them?
As soon as we get the connection to turn over and they can leave us thirty days, fifty days, ninety.
Can we make a deal with them that we're not gonna pay you until, uh, this person's been here for six months, this much, a year? A two-year, uh, you know, I, I'm just thinking outside the box cuz we have to do something different.
We could look at that, but typically they won't because they're not, they're, they're, they're to make money.
That's not their model.
That, that's not their model. And they're, they're competing against Randstad, um, Robert Caff, all the other ones that they're competing against. So.
It's just that if they have potential hires, I, I, I wanna exploit that.
Well, they're gonna search. They don't have potential hires. They're gonna go out in the market and search. Then we'll interview. We never take on, just because they give somebody to us to look at. We, we're gonna, the. Well, the O D Ds are gonna interview them to make sure it's a match they feel comfortable with and then they're on. Um, but we haven't particularly done that just due to the cost. And it's usually, like, when I talked to her, her scope was administrative. It wasn't nursing. It was really administrative. Um, we were already searching for the desktop. We've had a couple interviews and I think that's gone well.
Yeah, we're wrapping up next week.
She did the executive assistant. That offer has already gone through. You know, she looked at, she told me, I scoped your, you know, what you had out there. Um, the grant writer might have been one, you know, I haven't brought forward, but I wanted to kinda, she was gonna send me her, the contract cuz I wanted to see what the fees were associated with it.
Right.
I wanna really see what the fees are because if it's like around twenty percent, I don't know if it's a real value on that for us, um, because. Each time we'd be going through something like that, it takes a lot of energy and time out of it where you're already sourcing and we know where some of the stuff lands, but. I'm still, I, I do have a follow-up call, so I can go over the contract with them cuz I did ask for it. Go ahead. I'm sorry.
Don't worry, you're done.
Yeah, so it hasn't, it's something that's in my queue to bring to the board to see if there's a flavor for us to do that. Because I also would like to then go back to the, the lenders that we've been using, that we've said, no, we're not doing that. Because I'd like to allow them to have the opportunity as well because we've used them for quite some time and you've said we're not gonna go forward with direct hires.
Well, I, I, I guess I would just suggest that maybe we can, um. They say they have their rules and fees, but they're in business to make a deal. So. I, I would begin a negotiation. I would entertain a negotiation. We think that their twenty percent right up front is, is unreasonable and we're not interested in that. But we might be interested in something, a different arrangement. And, you know, if, if, if they think they can make money at it, they'll. I, I just think it's worth discussing.
Sure.
So I have just questioned the commissioners. I do believe the, uh, bonus money was voted by the commissioners and delegation to be used out of ARPA money. Right? So you have, so if you were to use that money differently to pay an a- agency, you'd have to get permission from you guys and the delegations? Cuz it's, it's a, it's a change from what was authorized.
Well, my, while the opera thing is sort of a little bit different, but what? To that same vein, my question would be, if we were to entertain Commissioner Guduz, the company that he's proposed. Do they get, is it a one-time fee or is it, is it in perpetuity, they're, they're getting X amount?
No, it's a one-time fee. So every time you use them, but we'd have to earmark what, what makes sense. Are we gonna do it for somebody that's making forty thou- a position that's forty thousand? Or do we want it to be for the upper things? Um, there's only two or three. The one on the Seacoast is well-known that we used, but it's just, um, I'd have to go back. It's been three years since we used it. But I would let you know that it was not a good match. Um, the director, who is director of nursing, the long-term care administrator would not wanna go that direction again. They really feel boots on the ground and doing that search, that out-searching and finding and having that opportunity to vet. Because we're in it, we're at will. So if it's not working out in the first few months or a couple weeks, we can just cut our costs. And it's no cost to us other than the upfront cost of, of Autumn doing it or that versus. Paying somebody that's in a few months and then they're leaving us and we've just lost all that money that we can't recruit.
Let's have, we'll have some further discussion down the road, if that's okay.
But they did call and I didn't engage and it was a delightful person. I just said, oh, we haven't, you know, I said the flavor. Has been this, but it's something I can bring back forward to the board. I just wanted to kinda get their contract and kinda read the terms and conditions and just let you know. Sorry.
All right. Now, Allison, you can do your.
So first and foremost, uh, I talked to Jason Smith. We've had a wonderful partnership with Red Cross. And I just want to, um, the Hilton's open, as you know. They've reached out to us and would like to be engaged in my quarterly Red Cross to benefit to our community and everything. So if you have no objection to that, I would like to be engaged with them. And allowing them to come back in.
What are they gonna do?
They do the blood drives.
Here?
Yeah, and we have a lot of. Please actually donate to that and find it.
I would recommend that we do it because we, we actually allowed the, um, one of the political people parties to come in and do their meeting here.
So their next date that they would be doing it, they've already said to us, if, if it was the, uh, the board's, uh, consideration would be May fifth. So we'd like to go ahead and then just ongoing from that. Um, secondly, I'd like to just let you know, I think it's time that we should engage in outreach to the two. Um, the two unions to start negotiations. We're in the first week of February. It'll take time to kinda. Get together, confirm dates and establish a date. I think both of those are your, uh, I, I, I think it would be you, Brian. It, um, is, uh, engineering, maintenance and the sheriff's supervisors.
Okay. How many, how many union negotiations have we scored?
It's going to be two.
Total for the year?
Yes. And I just wanted to ask for you, um, do you want these meetings to take place after a board meeting while you're on site or do you have?
As long as I know in advance, I'm flexible.
On anything. Okay. So if you don't mind, I'd like to do an outreach and start getting that moving because we're going into budget time already. Uh, lastly, I just wanted to kinda let you know, um. Um, UKG, we've been, we moved over to our implementation phase. We had our meeting on Monday. And moving forward, we'll have, there'll be various meetings for different people in both of the departments. But on Wednesdays at one o'clock, we're gonna have a standing meeting that'll go forward on that. So we're excited to move on that. The recruitment video is back out. Uh, they're gonna do those fifty and thirty-second clips that you'll be able to move up on different platforms. And we'll get that, the full, uh, video going. And, um, I think, uh, the M O U has gone out. Um, we're continuing to talk about that, um, between Sean Bolton and I. And, um, I'll let you know where that resides. He has a couple of questions that I'll address today after the meeting. And other than that, hopefully. If he likes the response to that, at the very least, he's gonna still have to host a meeting for the union membership. So that is what he's sent back to me. So it, I think it's moving in the right direction now. So thank you very much.
Thank you, Allison. Jude.
Hi. I just have a few, um, more pedestrian report items. I really appreciate that whole.
Yeah, that was good.
Your, yeah, allowing us to commit. That was great. Um, we just wrapped up two big camera projects down at the jail. We put nine new cameras in under one project. And we put four cameras in the suicide prevention cells in another project. We issued the first purchase order in March last year and Honeywell just bought the cameras. So it's not just us. Um, that was, those are really good projects to get wrapped up. We're waiting on the doors now for the suicide prevention cells and we can have the bunks. And, um, the doors are supposed to be two or three weeks out. I've gotta check with that guy again cuz it keeps pushing me in hope. Um, we've been dealing with an issue with floats in the U V chamber up at the wastewater treatment facility. It was. Um, a bit of a panic for a while there because the pumps were not running and it's our wastewater treatment facility. We have it going now. It is one of the bigger pieces of the water wastewater assessment that's being done that we're gonna be funding through ARPA. If, uh, it looks like it's pretty stable right now, but if the project, if the report isn't coming out any time soon, it may peel that off. Just to get it out because it is major and it, the way it is now, you wouldn't be able to build it that way. The, um, electric panel is done. You know, like the guy had to lay on his stomach to try working on it. It was just a bad situation entirely. It's stable now, but it's going to be, um, one of our priorities when we get that report out. One of the other things that we did make a priority was the, the stop valves down at the water plant. I think you asked about that, Commissioner. That project was completed this week. So we're very excited about that. Now we have the ability to turn the water off in the facility so we can service. Um, there's some equipment inside the plant that we need to shut the water off to service chlorine, injection systems, et cetera. So that's that. And.
You have any anticipation of any issues with the cold snap that's coming?
Always. I mean, yeah, we're expecting it. We, you know, we'll go through ahead of time. We'll double up some of the hot water pumps to make sure that both pumps are running. We're down low. We have a lead lag. All of both pumps running to make sure the pressure is really good, especially in the nursing home. It's gonna be really bad.
It's two days.
Yeah, yeah.
And then it's.
Right. So we'll keep an eye on it. We have someone, we have a shift technician that checks all of our old buildings at least once a shift after hours. So if there are issues in the old building, we should pick up on it fairly quickly as far as closing pipes.
Okay.
You know, we're anticipating, but we'll see.
Yes, I, I apologize. I zoned out a little bit while you were talking. Uh, I hope I.
I took your gas card.
Yes, I know, I know. It's a long meeting. Uh, last week, you, um. We talked about the backup, the water backup in the police. I don't know if it was in the jail to.
In the sheriff's department, yes.
Okay, so there was some reference to it backing up the, there was drainage issue.
It was a roof drain that was overwhelmed because it was too much water. Yeah, it was a roof drain. And the roof drain was clear, but there was water and then snow and then water and then melt and it just, it was too much water. For the drain to handle. And so it's a flat roof, so it came down wherever it could find an opportunity because it was deep.
Okay, so my question is, are you working on something to prevent that from happening in the future? It was kinda devastating to the, you know, well, not devastating, but I mean, it was a mess.
It was a mess. Well, the roof's been there for thirty years. That, that's never happened before. I'd like to think it was a perfect storm. It's a flat roof.
Yeah.
So there's really not a whole lot of.
There's no real good mitigation.
I think I have your answer, uh, Commissioner, is the new building's coming.
Right.
And we'll put it in the new building. It's simply my building, though.
All of our buildings have twenty-one, thirty-year warranties. Part of the warranty is that we get them inspected every five years by the manufacturer, so the warranty is extended. So, I mean, we do make sure that all the flashing is appropriate and so on. It was just, yeah, it was a mess.
Well, one, one lease was, in my office, was from the bathroom upstairs.
We didn't even know the water was coming down in the bathroom cuz we were so focused on dispatch. But the water was coming down in the sheriff's department in the bathroom and from vents. It made its way to, to the ground.
To my office. Where the ceiling tile fell down and smashed everywhere.
It was.
Ah, oh, boy.
Well, I was just wondering if there was a solution to prevent it moving forward.
I think so. I mean, I think we, we maintain a good warranty. We make sure the roof drains are clear. When it's something that needs to be shoveled, you know, if there's a lot of snow. The inmates will go up with one of the maintenance guys and they'll make sure that the drains are, there's a path shovel to the drains. But in this particular case, it was just too much water.
So it's not necessarily a common thing. It's sort of like ice stands on a house, right? You have to have the perfect conditions. You have to have the ice on the bottom and snow on the top, so it keeps the ice there. Doesn't the ice let it melt? Well, you know, right?
It was too much melting at one time. The drains couldn't handle it all. So it sat on the roof and it found an opportunity.
Yeah. Then.
We'll get back out there in the spring and, and look at the flashing again. We do that every year anyway, just to make sure that all the roof flashing is tight. But in this particular case, I don't think we could have avoided it.
All right. Thanks, Jude.
You're welcome.
Chuck. Um, obviously, we're very busy. Uh, we already one closed out S O S. We, um, fully submitted the fund as the demographics. Because Treasury even asked for additional demographics that they'd never asked for on the quarterly basis. And we have the issue that Uncourt can't provide that reporting accurately to us. So that's a total manual thing to do from inception to the ending of that program.
So they can't do it?
No, they, they can't because again, they hit two demographic points on us, race and ethnicity. We never asked them to do that. They did. And then because of timing of when something goes into going on their reporting side. Um, they had it, so they had to go into a certain status, um, which is closed submitted for payments. Um, lots of our people are not technologically, um, skilled, I guess, as far as we're. Approving their grant agreements, which really serves as notification, the assistance that they're actually getting. So they get stuck in the status that Uncourt tried to say that there was a workaround and there wasn't. We finally got that fixed.
Correct me if I'm wrong, Chuck, I'm sorry to interrupt. That's a question that comes up on the tenant's side. They don't have to answer, respond, right?
Well, they, they should. They can put them prefer not to answer. I mean, they, they can or decline and that still becomes a value, a data point that we have to report to the U S Treasury. They really, this residential system thing, they want demographics on just about everything. So it's, it's really a pain point as far as reporting goes. You know, I, I had to finally just call it. Which early in the morning or maybe almost mid-morning on whatever, on Tuesday to just come back to it. Um, then the next night, Tuesday was interesting because that was the ARPA filing and the portal treasury site actually went down period. For a certain period, for an amount of time. Luckily, I kept on checking to see when it finally came back up and it did. And, and so our, our quarter ending twelve thirty-one, twenty-two ARPA filing was done. And as Commissioner Coyle said, the good news from that is that that was our first bite at the apple during our calendar year twenty-two, twenty-two revenue loss. For ARPA's calculations, um, which again, allow for a five-point-two percent annual increase in revenue. We don't get that. You know, as far as non-federal and non-federal pass-throughs to the state revenues. You know, intergovernmental revenues get taken out for this purpose as far as for state or state pass-throughs. That means. Grants and other things like that, pro share gets taken out. Um, so we're up to twenty-five million cumulatively. We have one more. You know, calculation of that revenue replacement. That won't be able to be done until next January. Again, we don't see a five-point-two percent annual increase. So I anticipate that we could hit closer to thirty-eight, anywhere like thirty-eight to forty million cumulative is gonna be out of the sixty. To be allocated towards revenue replacement or, or revenue loss. So again, frees up a lot of what we can do. What we have to report as far as tracking and substantiation to, uh, to the feds, to Treasury through the portal. Um, so it makes it a lot easier cuz it's a wider latitude of projects.
Yeah.
So it's, it's all, all around. It's good news. So I was happy when I saw that caliphate came in close to where I thought it would. Cuz I thought we'd be close to doubling where we were and indeed it, it happened.
What it makes sense once we have the final plans of the building, um, that we convene. In conjunction with our ARPA funds and try to work through some of what we've expended. And what we're trying to allocate and try to plan out a little bit of our. So that we get, we make sure we're tight on the money.
Yeah. So, so I guess what I would like to personally do is that lots of the monies that have right now gone to this expenditure category one point four that are for the building. And that expenditure category is to prevent the currents and, and spread of COVID in, in, uh, overcrowded work situations or congregative living situations. That's how we rationalize far as having our proper meeting place, not being held anymore, but being in the auditorium. At the new place as far as relocating, sheriff's office primarily dispatch. And also for, uh, county attorneys, I'm on top of another in, in that part of the courthouse. Um, all those things right now would be under this expenditure category one point four. Um, feds require anything that's a one million dollar capital expenditure or higher that you need to do separate filing substantiation with them. So moving it over instead to the expenditure category six for revenue placement. Takes all that extra reporting and requirement stuff, Davis Bacon, all the fun stuff. Yeah, um, and puts it over there cuz once something is dedicated for a category six project. This, there's no additional reporting except for, there just isn't. You just have to report what you've obligated in expense cumulatively and in the quarter. That's, it stops right there.
That's good. So then.
Yeah. So I just think it would be, once we're at that next phase of the, the plan, we have the final plans, then we can. You know, do it periodically as it relates.
Yeah. So what happened is, I mean, I've been talking about updating factual numbers and everything. It'd be like a rebalancing. Instead of having monies allocated to this one point four category. That gradually some of it migrates to being this expenditure category six, the revenue placement or lost revenue projects. So.
Yeah, definitely. All right, very good.
So again, just overall, very busy. Um, W two's went out to individuals. Hopefully they got theirs in the mail. But they are fully completed and published, so they're actually on the employee, um, homepage tile. But they are fully completed and published, so they're actually on the old employee um homepage tile for prenals as well. And not only twenty twenty two W twos, but if you ever need prior two years, they're on there as well. Ten nine nines also went out as far as her qualifying vendors. So those went out timely as well because January thirty first deadline on that. Um, again, this this overall very busy. Like Alison mentioned, UKG kickoff meeting, and then we have our standing meetings every Wednesday. Um, so that's, you know, again, looking forward, Ben's all work on that. Julie's done a lot of work on that. Um, we had a productive meeting, I think, with the uh UKG kickoff team. Um, I wish I had actually really looked at everything we had submitted because I think they didn't realize just how much work had been done and submitted upfront. Because of the questions they asked, we already submitted items on. So. But we're looking forward to uh get down to a much more flexible system, more efficient and better design of of uh purely charter timekeeping.
When do we start thinking about budgets for?
So March, so March. Now, you know, some departments on their own, like like Catherine Mann for the sheriff's office, is there even working on it, like even in? So March is normally the real month that lots of departments do lots of work. March thirty first is the deadline by statute for departmental proposed. And that goes towards, um, you know, what was mentioned by Alison Bell, you know, negotiations because. If we can start getting at least some estimated numbers for potentially where we're going with the commissioners have a feel. Or we might go for increases. Now, granted, they're not two huge unions. We still, every bit helps. So that we're not having such a big increase in the the wage-related lines between departmental proposed and the commissioners proposed. Now, there could be. Obviously, some differences too, because I might do a certain assumption with department proposed because I have to put in something as far as. You know, wages, stuff like that, as far as some sort of increase or whatever, which obviously then can be subject to the, you know, commissioners deciding to go to a different route. Um, or a course as far as for the commissioners' proposed budgets. Um, and so normally, basically, March by statute, the current budgets have to be done, and that includes all county specials too. Um, and then April is like the commissioners' proposed budget month. And basically, before April is done, those, we try to get them out and then within the first ten days of May. We have the public hearing on the commissioners' proposed budget. And right around there too, I think sometimes we've had the same day, is the almost like first executive committee meeting about the budget as well. And then from there, they actually schedule right after the public hearing for them for the commissioners' budget, the subcommittee meetings start.
All right, so we've got next.
Yeah, so then it'll be, so there'll be a schedule that'll go out because really the delegation coordinator works on that as well. But I think, um, if she only sends that communication to me as far as the schedule, I think, um, with that one. She's the name sends it to other departments, so I'll make sure that everyone gets it. You know, and then people, the departments can work through their um subcommittee chairs as far as furnishing information. Going over some major items and so on and so forth.
Thank you. Jason.
So tomorrow, uh, we get Cochran, the uh Posture Max Press and Jerome Committee, um, and that was, that was Representative Wallace. Follow me, that's why I answered it. Um, he has a gentleman wants me to meet him probably in Cochran tomorrow too for um, wants to get involved in our programs and. Has a lot of stuff to offer, so I'm gonna try and meet with that gentleman tomorrow in Cochran as well. Um, uh, our our set grant is coming to an end, uh, which is the one we looked at for doing ninety day in-house treatment programs. It'll be closed out by the end of this month, um, which has been good, uh, which helped us along. On Monday, I'm at the, I'm gonna be honest, but Monday, I'm supposed to be at the opioid abatement committee meeting at one o'clock. Which I'm trying to find out some answers of how I can do the grant for Medicaid assist treatment because, you know, they denied last time and the counties were trying to figure out some sort of formula. That's at one. But at two o'clock, somehow, I gotta go roped into being the person to testify in H B one two twenty nine. Which is feminine hygiene products. So there's a bill put in, reference that. I have to testify that they're offered, we offer both, all ten county, as I call, offer both products and at no cost. So I have to go and testify to that as well on Monday.
So you do know that you can do, you can submit written tests and so on, right?
They've asked to come to me to speak to the committee.
I get it, yeah.
Yeah, I I'll, I'll, I'll figure out both somehow, some way. Um, because Commissioner Helen Hank's gonna be there too, and she's on both committees with me too, so we'll figure it out. Um, we, uh, James Lorden, Lieutenant Lorden, had worked with the um, some people from the, from the uh, uh, courts. Um, and also with Association of Counties to put together a grant for um, trauma-informed. Which trauma-informed is uh, gonna have some train the trainers who will be able to go out and teach other people what um. Using certain phrases and words, how it impacts others. It's being run through Association of Counties, so it's on a grant we have to accept. But with his work on it, it was one and twenty spots were awarded, so we'll have twenty people trained through the courts, jails, everything else. Train the trainers, so they'll go out and.
Twenty across the com- the state.
Basically, yeah, we're gonna eat up a good portion. I'm actually rocking in, but um, and then they'll go out and I could teach. So it's gonna be, it's gonna be good. Um, the nine cameras, thank you, Jude. Those went to the the closets that were on the units that were not covered, um, where. Things going there shouldn't be going on there. We had a pre incident uh a couple, a year or two ago, so that's gonna take care of that issue, so people are left alone. Um, Autumn's not here right now, but um, working on doing the video recruitment just for the jail. Picked out a company for much uh less expensive than we thought. Um, we're gonna work out a date for them to come in and start filming that. Very excited about that. And last thing is, um, D H H S, um, they have some money. For um, doing enhanced cleaning, maybe some U V stuff, um, and uh, training. And they're trying to reach all the jails, so I have them coming in. They're gonna do a tour on February fourteenth. If you wanna spend Valentine's Day with me, that's fine. And I'm gonna see what we do for cleaning and that kind of stuff. Maybe they'll offer some stuff for free, including possibility of U V cleaners. Possibility of paying for, we're trying to work on a Monday through Friday medical officer to take care of some of our issues in in medical. That person might be able to be through them, sent to um, N C C H C, National Corrections. So I have a certification, whatever, it's all part of my entire mom for free. And they'll be trained, and then only thing they have to do is when they come back, it's a possibility of going and teaching some others. So they're coming in to look at us and I try to jump on that. Seeing, that's freestyle. And the last thing is, I told you before, um, a grant that the state had won. To put machines and anybody wanting for the facilities that could do our in on in-house. Um, testing for COVID, so I'm standing up the state labs, can also do strep throat and can also do uh flu. Um, most of those pieces have come in, and so I anticipate, hopefully, next month, I'll be putting it all together and we'll be able to do that stuff in-house at a much. Reduced cost where you have to send, send them, at least for prime cares then, because that's part of our budget, so we'll be able to save some money that way. And again, that was a grant through the state. When it runs out, owning the machine afterwards, pre-years like eight hundred bucks, which is small money compared to sending someone out to the hospital, test for those things. So it's good, it's it's good for us. We're gonna have it in there and we're looking at it. So I got it.
All right. I think, uh, got everybody. Okay, remember, I'm gonna ask, does anybody in the public that wishes to speak now would be kind? I don't really see anybody on Zoom that's in the public. All set. Okay, so now the non-publics, would you choose staying and?
First, and then because I assume that Allison may fit your sample for that. With respect.